Good evening and welcome to the Select Board regular meeting for August 12, 2025. As usual, I'm going to let you know that the meeting is being broadcast, I think, by two news outlets in the room, The Observer and The Local. In accordance with the open meeting law, if anyone else is recording or would like to, they need to let me know now, please. So we are going to start our meeting with a public comment tonight. I believe we have two. The first of which is Debbie Bryson. Hi, come on up. Debbie, if you can have a seat, you'll just introduce yourself and state your address. I think you have three minutes to give your comment. Just a reminder that the Board doesn't usually talk back, so we're just going to listen to you. Okay, all right. Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Debbie Bryson. I'm a resident of 18 Hoover Road. I've lived there for 30 years and raised three children, all born in Needham, and who attended St. Joe's and the Needham Public Schools, and took the bus from the top of the hill in question, historically without incident. I wish to state that I am in favor of slowing the traffic across the top of our hill. I am vehemently opposed to the proposed complete renovation and redesign plan currently before this board. The three reasons for my opposition as follows: its hastiness, its lack of thorough engineering study, with shared justification facts, and lastly, the plan as proposed is outright and utterly dangerous to the citizens who live on, drive, and walk these hills. Firstly, the hastiness of this plan is obvious. A lot was proposed over the summer when residents are not all local. In addition, only select residents were invited to the neighborhood plerating. Myself and my neighbors on Hoover Road were not invited. I drew attention to this at the first meeting. It was assured we would be mauled the next notices, though we're not. When I called the engineering department with questions regarding the proposed plan, my questions were not approved of or answered, and Justin hung up on me. I called back and left a message for the lead engineer, Tom, but to date have not received a call back. That was last Wednesday, the date of notice of this meeting. Finally, I further feel this action is too hasty, since the only previous effort to reduce the speed at the top of the hill by the time was to put a stop sign on Hoover, which clearly was never the root of the speed issue across the top of the hill. The FHWA, Federal Highway Administration, publishes the MUTCD, a Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which states, and I quote, "Stop signs can be used on thorough streets if specifically justified by traffic engineering study." When I asked the engineering team at the neighborhood meeting why they did not take the least restrictive and least costly measures on this hill first, and put lighted stop signs all above Tower and Paul Revere, the exact location of the root of the problem, the reply was that you can't put stop signs on thorough streets. However, all of this information is false according to the federal government and MUTCD. We can and we should try putting lighted stop signs at the root of this problem first before tearing up the entire landscape of our hilltop. What is the rush? There have been more than or extremely limited accidents, none in the 30 years I've been there. I would be negligent if I failed to point out that engineering did not do this much reconstruction after other serious and devastating town accidents. Again, I ask, what is the justification for the complete destruction of our current hill, the reconstruction, the cost amid potential and also water disruption that could happen as a result of this project? Engineering department's response to my questions were this: This project was on our predecessor boss's to-do list, and they figured we'd get to it. That's how engineering answered my question. Furthermore, the partial amount of cones which have been placed on the top of the hill are supposed to represent the redesign project. These cones do not fully represent the amount of blink lines extending down Hoover, and the cones at the top of Hoover Road significantly broaden and can squeeze the amount of room of cars that Hoover have to pass, those coming around from Tower on the left and across from Paul Revere, and also from Tower on the right. I personally was nearly clipped by a FedEx truck as I was going up Hoover, and a FedEx truck was coming around from Tower on the left. I had to stop and let him pass. I further witnessed a car at the top of this intersection back down to let a landscaping truck cross over from Paul Revere. The width of Hoover in front of my house, the second cone from the top is 26 feet one inch. The width of Tower at the crosswalk opening from the recent curb work due to water issues has been reduced to 23 feet, although the ground in paint in the new plan incorrectly displays 30 feet. I measured it three times today. Tower measures a full 40 feet 6 inches across. They're not even the same width. When I asked engineering about this, they said we have to squeeze the top of Hoover so that children have less of a cross to walk across the top. However, the width across Tower on the top is 6 inches wider. Why squeeze Hoover so tight? It doesn't make sense. I further asked, why are there only two crosswalks in the new plan? The response from engineering is that we don't have sidewalks on the other side. I said, well, what happens to the kids who live two houses down from the top of Paul Revere? Do they have to run really nearly across this intersection? He shook his head and said... So why, if this is a safety concern, why is it only safe for some of the kids? It doesn't make sense. In closing, I would advocate for a thorough engineering study to be done at the top of our hill before any extensive redesign project is done. Engineering should have accident data from the top of our hill, which they had none when I asked. They should be able to cite serious previous sensible attempts to alleviate this problem before tearing up and reconstructing our hill to this magnitude. When a plan is complete, it must take into consideration the safety of all of our children, not only those on one side of the street. It should provide for safe drains for all cars and trucks, and it must take into consideration and plan with great care for the huge pedestrian population which walks these hills and will be in grave danger by shrinking the width of the streets, and absolutely, there is no thought or plan for a safe provision of sidewalks. Please, I beg you, drive up there and have a look at this ridiculous plan.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Okay, our next public comment is on Zoom. Mr. Kaylin. Mr. Kaylin, I'll remind you to unmute, and then say your name and your address, and you have three minutes to speak. Mr. Kaylin, you're still muted if you can hear us. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can.
Wonderful. I'm on a telephone, so I'm going to be brief, but I was really impressed with the first person there, Debbie. She's really wicked smart, but I'm probably not going to be that smart. My name is John Kaylin, and I'm on Hoover Road also, and I vote a lot in precinct I. So I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak. I know it's a hot night, and nobody likes to hear complaints. So my thing is not going to be to complain, because I do appreciate just the fact that you guys show up on a hot night like tonight. And I'm just going to give you some of the facts, and nothing but the facts. But I'm a lifelong, or I'm a longtime resident of Needham. My mother and father were lifelong residents in this town, okay? No offense, but I kind of agree with Debbie. I strongly object to what has happened with this proposal this summer, and our neighborhood is in complete support and agreement with this nice neighbor, Debbie, who just spoke to the board. I don't want to repeat myself, but I was impressed with her, and I hope that you were too, because she's a very well-educated, serious person. Now, this four-way intersection has been safely used for 75 to 80 years since after World War II. During World War II, there was a lookout tower that you could see Boston Harbor, okay? Today, Needham has over 400 employees who could not work this out with the neighborhoods, and this is sort of an embarrassing result. Now that this flawed engineering plan is before the board, the board has to decide. So I would say that the majority of neighbors support Debbie and go along with the recommendation of a stop sign at Paul Revere, just like the stop sign they have at Hoover. Therefore, for the cost of a couple of stop signs, okay, we could save Needham about $150,000. Think about that. Just think what we could do tonight with $150,000, you know, by not using this flawed engineering plan to redo this four-way intersection. Obviously, any reasonably prudent person would vote for the cost of a stop sign at Paul Revere, and then everyone would be safe and everybody would be happy. That's sort of the general idea. I hope that you, board people, will vote to sort of leave it the way it is. That's what we're hoping for.
Thanks, Mr. Kaylin. Thanks for your comment.
Okay, do you have any questions, or did I miss anything to convince you guys?
Typically, a public comment, we just listen to you. We talk enough. We'll be discussing this later on in the evening, though, so you can tune in for that, okay? Thank you. And I see that there's one gentleman in the room who would like to come up and make a public comment, so you can come on up. You have a seat. Please identify yourself and your address, and then again, you're going to go about three minutes, okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Smith. I live at 201 Paul Revere Road. I'm right on the circle. I know Debbie, I respect Debbie. I didn't call her to the conference. I came here to watch, but I was at the meetings. Yes, there's an administration that I needed to hand out, and the other one, the next one was a handout to the Cayman Door. The people from the Department of Public Works came up, and they explained they were trying to address the crosswalks. And because of the crosswalks and the work that had to be done, they also had something that Mr. Marson was trying to do for a long time, he was on his list. They were very thoughtful, they had two plans, and there was extensive discussion and feedback from the people, including me. The sidewalks, there's no sidewalk in front of my house. Doesn't do any good to put a crosswalk to a berm without a sidewalk. We talked about how the kids walk to school down Paul Revere. They don't come across. We talked at length about the sidewalk plow being on one side of Tower, but the kids all walk down the other because of where the playground is. And they listened to all this. So I think that the work that they did and the feedback they took was good. I was surprised that, I was surprised Ms. Bryson was that vocal about it. I think most people up there are dying for a change because it's not a stop sign. You can't put a stop sign in a giant circle. I really came because I'm in a butter. I would be affected by it, and I'm trying to understand my interaction, because I did call the number on here, I left a message, and no one called me back, and I know the gentleman, I think his name's Tyler, I think he was out. So I sent him an email, I haven't heard back. Maybe he's coming back today. So I'm looking, I'm looking to continue the feedback because I'm just in a butter, but I don't really feel that most people up there are opposed to this. I just, I didn't really come to give a comment, but I wanted to say that because there's not a revolt going on up there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Okay, just one sec. Okay. I can't read that from here, so, okay. Great. Dave, we're bringing you over. If you can unmute, identify yourself, please, by name and address. You can have about 30, sorry, three minutes to speak.
For the record, but I don't think you'll need it, I'm Dave Sherman from Rosemary Way. I just have a quick point of order. I'm having a heck of a time hearing the people that are making public comments from within the room. Their voices are coming through basically just ecstatic.
Oh, okay, well, thank you. I appreciate that point of order, and we'll check with the Needham channel, who is the one broadcasting.
Thank you. Your voice is a little bit that way, too, although I can make out what you're saying.
Chair, would you mind testing that mic? Yeah, just to check.
David, is this the same? Is this any better?
It was for a second, and then when you got closer to the mic, it wasn't.
Okay, well, thanks for letting us know, and hopefully the Needham channel is also hearing this comment and is on their way to rectify the situation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we want to pause? I think...
Is that your only comment?
Dave, that's your only comment, right? David Sherman?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. We appreciate it. Do we need to pause for a second?
I don't want it to are all you and on Zoom, so maybe we...
Okay. Excellent. Okay, so to deal with our audio issues, we'll move on to our first order of business, which is our proclamation for the 2025 International Overdose Awareness Day. This is just the board and just on Zoom, so hopefully in the interim, the Needham channel can check our audio. Madam Chair.
Town of Needham, 2025 International Overdose Awareness Day proclamation. Whereas, International Overdose Awareness Day aims to bring communities together, to remember without stigma those who have died from overdose, and acknowledge the grief of the family and friends left behind. And whereas, observance of this day is an opportunity to raise awareness about the risk of overdose, promote discussion about prevention, and share information about support services. And whereas, addiction is a disease that touches families in every community. The epidemic has claimed the lives of thousands of Massachusetts residents and affected countless other family members. And whereas, those affected by overdose are our children, our parents, our siblings, and deserve our compassion and support. And whereas, the town of Needham, Massachusetts does affirm and acknowledge the pain and hardship caused by drug overdose. Now therefore, be it resolved that August 31, 2025, be declared International Overdose Awareness Day in the town of Needham. Signed, this 12th day of August, 2025.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Shmoo.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Oh.
There is a vigil, right, coming up, August 20...
There is. I think it's August 28.
Thank you.
There is, thank you. Thursday evening at, I don't know, it's on my calendar.
At the Memorial Park.
At Memorial Park.
Yeah.
At 6:30.
At 6:30. Thank you. Very important. Appreciate that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. It's nice to be able to do it all at once. Okay, thank you. Next, we're going to move on to a public hearing from Eversource Energy, talking about a grant of location at 122 Birds Hill Avenue, and we're joined on Zoom by Joanne Calendar. Hi, Joanne.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes, good evening.
Excellent.
So I'm here, Eversource, seeking a grant of location to install approximately 11 feet of conduit from the pole on Morningside Road, a pole specifically 234 over 1, installing conduit from that pole over to the private property at 122 Birds Hill Avenue, and this is to provide the new home with electric service. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Town Manager, is everything in order? Excellent. Okay, does anybody on the board have any thoughts to contribute here? Okay, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the room or online who would like to make a comment on this matter, now's the moment.
No one online.
I don't see anyone online. No one in the room. Okay.
Yes, I just have a point of process for what it's worth. It struck me that it might be useful on this form to know who the developer is for the project, and I went looking, I didn't find it anywhere, but that, I think sometimes it's useful because we'll recognize a name and know in fact that that person is familiar versus a name of somebody who might not be familiar. It's just, if it could be included when they fill it up, the application, that would be helpful, I think.
Okay, so maybe make a note of that and talk...
I think the proposed plot plan...
Includes all that type of information.
They have some more information, yeah.
Has a lot of them.
Right, really does. Okay, super.
I could put that on the cover page.
Oh, thanks, Tom. That's great. Appreciate it. Tom Ryder, Town Engineer. Okay, so unless there is more discussion, perhaps someone has a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from Eversource Energy to install approximately 11 feet of conduit in Morningside Road.
Second.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
You, too.
I move the consent and the appointments.
Excellent. Second. All right, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Great, thank you. And then we're going to move on now and invite up our Director of Public Works, Karis Lustig, to speak with us about a whole slew of things, starting with the water and sewer abatement for Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital. So let's switch into my other... All right, so we're starting out with the proposed water and sewer bill abatement for Beth Israel Deaconess Needham. Can't wait to hear about it.
Yes, Madam Chair, the town has been working with the hospital for, as you can see, a number of years to resolve a long dispute relative to the use or non-use of water. And after a lengthy negotiation, we came to a settlement in the amount of $51,210. And with that abatement, they will be paying the balances, which is excess of $200,000.
Okay. So was this just a, can you tell us a little bit more about the nature of the dispute?
The water meter readings were under reading when tested, and the meters that were in place were done by a private contractor that weren't installed by the town. That was discovered, and which resulted in a very high usage amount, which the hospital claimed they could not have used that amount of water. What makes the issue complicated is during that time, that's when the major construction was going on, and there is sometimes water used, whether it's to keep dust down or used in the construction process. The hospital at the time, the individuals, the individuals that we spoke with are no longer there. There's a new management team and building maintenance team. We're claiming that there was no water used, and, but we found that very difficult to accept, and through various testing, those agreed that there were some issues with the amount of water that was being measured, but certainly could not be definitive in the amount that they were claiming they could not have used, and this was how we came to a settlement. Otherwise, we would be in litigation.
And so, moving forward, we're...
It hasn't been an issue since, but the bills have been piling up to get this resolved, and by getting this paid, it will move us forward.
All right. So Dave, I think as I understand, this brings the hospital current on their water bill because they have been withholding payment.
Yes, anything in that time period, and with this will, the payment will, payment has been made for the amount less the proposed abatement.
And I thought I understood the amount to be this $172,000, less the $51,000 for a total of about $121,000.
That was back then, but they hadn't been paying the bills even after that. They've been making payments periodically, so the balance kept increasing.
Okay, so for the period that's involved and the negotiated offset that's involved, that's 120, and then there's an additional amount that happened post...
The total amount was outstanding, correct.
Post 2018.
Post 2018.
Okay. All right, we have all different numbers, and I just was adding up.
Well, as you can see, the proposal, the date back when we were coming up with this recommendation was back in 2022. And then we thought we had a resolution then, but then there was change in administration. We weren't aware of that. And then we continued to make communications. There have been changes in management there. Now there's new management. We got back together, walked them through the history, showed them all the bills, documentation. Cecilia spent a lot of time pulling the information over the years to show bill after bill how the consumptions were, showing that over that time rates had changed, explained what the rate structure is, that if you use more water, the rate per 100 cubic feet is higher. Had to go through the whole, that entire explanation, and plus, they had to go back and look at their records. They came to a resolution that the new administration thought that this was a fair resolution.
Thank you.
So maybe a similar question. So these are for periods between 2018 and 2019?
Correct.
The time periods after that, they're all caught up? There's no dispute about that?
There is, there's no dispute.
There's no longer a dispute. They weren't paying them all, and there's some internal reasons why on their side why that was happening, but they are now current. When we came to this resolution with them, they've made a payment...
They've already paid that extra?
Yes, they have cut the, they have issued a check, and this will actually bring their account, if the board were to approve this, it'll bring the account down to zero, and their payments will be timely again.
And the issue, first of all, it sounds like it was not the town's water meter? It was a private water meter?
So the vast majority of new meters are installed by the private sector. They're not installed by the town. When you have a new build, the contractor is required to go through our water meter company and purchase the equipment directly, install it, and then we come out and inspect it. In this particular case, it's more complicated than a house. A house kind of has a standard size meter. This particular meter type, it's a larger meter, and it was supposed to be a compounding meter. So a compounding meter records high volume, so when they're doing like lots of things, and also low volume. Sort of two things happened simultaneously. One is that the meter itself, when we went to go test it, was testing that it was over-recording, but they didn't put a compounding meter in there, so any of the water that was being used that was low volume, so things like overnight, we weren't catching any of that water through the meter. So we sort of had two different items that were happening at the same time, which made it particularly complicated. And they didn't bring us in for inspection, which also makes it more complicated.
Which is, I assume why the incorrect meter wasn't caught? Or at least...
Yes, yes.
Mistakes weren't caught? Okay.
And so, how was it recalculated?
The right...
Was it, so when you noticed that it was over-measuring in some cases and under-measuring in others, was, how did you arrive at... measuring in others, was... How did you arrive at an estimate for what the actual usage was?
The... Well, that was one of the disputes, is we never came to a resolution in terms of what the actual consumption was. We had our records, they were claiming, based upon work that they had done, that the usage was less. What we came to is a dollar resolution.
And you did look at current usage. I mean, this is what we've got some other history.
The usage did go down, yes. Well, since that time, and since the correct meters have been installed, usage is lower. It is higher than it used to be, but it's certainly lower than that time period. As I said, the complication was that high usage spike was during a summer enduring construction. That's where the problem is, is hence, there's a sense that construction may have played, may have played a part in the higher water usage.
So the moral of the story is make sure you bring us in for inspection of your water meter?
Oh, correct.
Right, okay. Any other?
Dave, are you satisfied with this result?
I'm satisfied because I think the alternative would have been more costly.
Okay.
And the only people that would have benefited financially are attorneys.
Okay. Would you please thank Cecilia for the work?
She's over there.
How long... So you said this originally was proposed in 2022. How long was that after?
Like, how long were the negotiations? I'm just trying to figure out how long a typical resolution is.
In this particular case, I think we've been talking since 2018, 2019. Again, we had to go through the bench testing. We want to look at normalized data. So particularly with a new meter and a new section of a building, we don't know what the normal consumption should be to even figure out if there was anomaly or not. And then there was a lot of transition within BID, which made it more challenging. Just to... Every time we'd sort of go through the logistics, someone would leave, someone would come in, they'd look at the data they had, they'd get confused, and we'd kind of have to start again. So that's, I think, also why it has taken much longer than it would typically in this situation.
Everyone knows by memory that there was a pandemic in the middle of all of that as well. So just to say, it's seven years in the making, and it would be good to bring this to a conclusion.
Well, there was a pandemic, and there was Norwood Hospital. There's been a little going on at the hospital lately, so.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you for persevering and re-explaining over and over again, and then finally to us. So any other comments on the board?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that the board approve water and sewer abatement number 3145.
Second.
1345?
1345.
1345. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, so next up is our extended discussion of the intersection layout changes at Hoover Road, Tower Avenue, and Paul Revere Road. This, of course, is the subject of a number of our public comments earlier this evening. So it's Karis Lustig and Tyler Gabralski.
Hi.
Welcome back from vacation, Tyler, whose poor email box was getting inundated while he was away.
All right, so give us the whole picture.
Yes, I'll start again. I'm sort of just general principles that applies to this project and this second project, which is sort of the policies that drive some of these decisions. So the town has a complete streets policy that talks about looking at all modalities whenever we do a project. So it doesn't say we have to go and change the whole town all at once, but it says when we're looking at doing work, we want to look at making sure that we're accounting for all different types of modalities when we end up doing that work. It was interesting to hear, I had heard that it was on my predecessor's radar, but actually, the radar, the person who brought this to me was actually the prior highway superintendent, Ryan Hoyland. And there are many reasons why this particular intersection was one that had been looked at. One is that we couldn't really get congruous sidewalk plowing in this area right now. The sidewalk is too narrow on one side of the road. So actually, our sidewalk tractor goes up the hill on Tower Ave. It comes off the sidewalk, it crosses, and it goes across because it can't fit on one component of Tower Ave. So widening the sidewalk at that one particular area was an advantage, because then we can actually plow snow through the entire school walking route that's there on one side of the road. I do believe I brought this to the board.
You did.
Like, a year ago, maybe two years ago. We sort of had a pinch design. If you were on Tower, you really had to take a turn onto your own road, and I think there was some concern about that. So we did go back and take a look at different options. The... We ended up meeting with the neighbors. We did primarily focus on those who are butting this particular intersection as a primary, and then the rest of the neighborhood as secondary. And primarily, that's because if you look at this, it's pretty significant changes to those who physically abut the area. So we're talking about altering curb line, right of way, adding sidewalk, and making some significant changes. And we came with two different kind of configurations, none of which were the ones that we looked at a year and a half ago, because those were sort of, I think, dismissed for their various items. We'd looked at putting a traffic circle up there. And there's a couple of reasons for it. One, the neighborhood has come to us on a multitude of occasions because of speeding across the top of this intersection. It sounds like it comes primarily from those going uphill, and they're sort of gaining momentum when they hit the top of the hill, and then they don't screech to a halt. And so I think that was one of the concerns. Again, we did have this school walking route as a secondary concern. And we also have challenges plowing this particular area. So there's a significant amount of blacktop, and the neighbors all commented, they're like, well, in this plan, where does all that snow go? And we got to tell them, well, there won't be all that snow because we're plowing significantly less surface, so we don't have to figure out where to distribute that amount of surface. So that's why this particular project was pursued. We also have a general goal of trying to right-size the size of our roads for the type of traffic that we have. In this particular case, we're bringing it, you know, under 30 feet for the width. Our standard right now for a main road for travel width for a car is 11 feet. I know some would like it smaller as well. But obviously, this road has a much wider right of way, particularly up at the top of the intersection. And we... The neighborhood pretty much was drawn to one particular plan when we ended up discussing it. I think there was a request initially, the house in front of Paul Revere, it was sort of more pulled out into the middle of the intersection. And the general neighborhood asked if we could distribute that a little bit more equitably across the entire intersection and not have just one section come out. And so that's sort of the main purpose of the design. Once we came back, we had to tweak it based on the feedback we had. And we'd committed that we would do a layout, so that way people could see and experience what it would look like before we made any modifications to the right of way, which is currently up there on Tower. Obviously, it'll look a little bit different because we're talking about pavement and curb, and we're not talking about, you know, large cones. But it does give you a feel for navigating it. We have reached out to police, fire, and the school department, and they've had their equipment up there to make sure that there's sufficient right of way for a fire engine and a bus, and they feel like it's sufficient. The only comment they had is they might want to put signage up that says no parking on the corner. But that was really their only comment back. So I am here tonight to get some feedback on whether or not we want to move forward with this project, as it is a significant change to an existing right of way. And I think, did I cover everything down there?
Yeah, the only thing I'll add is just that the main sort of motivation behind the curb changes, you know, research and the industry standard, we know that the best way to calm traffic is through changes to the built environment, including the curb line. So signage is an accessory tool in our toolbox, but it is not a primary tool in our toolbox. The other thing that I just want to mention is that stop signs alone are not, according to the MUTCD, the traffic manual, that's, you know, federal and state guidelines, stop signs are not to be used for speed control. They are used as right-of-way signifiers. So although they are used in tandem with other strategies to help calm traffic, and we are actually proposing an additional stop sign on Paul Revere Road as part of this plan, it is not a recommended tool under federal guidance for speed control. And then the last thing I'll just say is that one of the great benefits, along with the snow, is that we, as we go through our road projects every year, we are always looking for ways to reduce impervious surface because of many reasons, including our stormwater management. You know, I'm sure the town engineer could explain, you know, how great it is to reduce... This is one of our largest, widest intersections in town. When you have a really wide intersection like that, it makes traffic movement very unpredictable. So this is a way to channelize that, control it, make sure that people are looking in the right places before they cross the road. And that goes for pedestrians as well. The approach is, we've all, you know, as Karis mentioned, they were designed to be, in this particular proposal, they're at least 24 feet in width. A standard average road in town, we have 12 feet travel lanes going in each direction. So it's pretty much textbook width. It may appear to be really tight, but if it causes you to slow down when you navigate it, that's sort of the objective of the project. And that's all I'll add to that.
So the only thing I'll just say, it's very similar to a different project we did in a... Similar project we did in a different neighborhood, which was near Brewster and Alden. And I think we had a lot of... We had a resident in that area who I think vocalized similar concerns because of the change of the pattern. We've seen a lot of success in that area. One of the things, and I know we're talking about in this area as well, is when you add so much footage to somebody's frontage of their property, we... The person adjacent to that property is responsible for maintenance. So we are also talking here about if it's grass, if it's trees, and then do we do river rock or some other type of treatment in these areas as well, all of which would be impervious surface.
Got a question. The sightlines of the stop signs on Paul Revere and Hoover, because the elevation changes, can people see oncoming cars from Tower at that stop line?
Are you... At Paul Revere, you're saying?
Both Paul Revere and Hoover.
Yeah, so the engineers place the stop bars, you know, according to their field evaluation. The intersection, it's a lot easier to see where the cars are queuing for the stop bars when the intersection's a lot smaller, right? So the car, rather than being, coming out from around the corner on Paul Revere, they're going to proceed into practically, you know, the, what is today the middle of the intersection, stop there. They're going to be easily visible from these two approaches coming from the south. So that's... The idea is to bring the corners in so that everyone can see each other better, and that there's less exposure time in the intersection.
It's also a wide open space, so unlike other areas where you may have hedges or fences in both of these locations, because we're taking existing pavement and bringing it down, it does provide better sightlines as well around the corner. And we'll be working with engineering and with the town tree warden, just to make sure that we locate, if we do locate any trees, that they won't eventually obstruct the intersection.
And the comments about sidewalks, it... Correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like there's no sidewalk on Paul Revere going up to the intersection, right?
That is correct.
There's no intersection, and there's no sidewalk anyway.
So, well, but is that a place to improve? Like, why, if we're redoing things, why wouldn't we add a sidewalk?
So we're still trying to talk about whether or not we should have sidewalks on both sides of the road on some of our neighborhood streets, and whether that's the right treatment or the wrong treatment. And I wouldn't speak specifically to this location. But right now, we do have a policy of not adding any additional sidewalk until we maintain and/or are able to manage our existing inventory in a more sustainable fashion. We are actually working right now with the Mobility Planning Committee to do something this fall, to try to target a few neighborhoods that we think might be good candidates for systemic sidewalk removal. I've always said, if you can have a basketball hoop that faces your road, and you're comfortable with your kids playing basketball on the street, you probably don't require sidewalk on both sides of the road. And in many of these cases, we have sidewalk that is not ADA compliant, isn't wide enough. And if we were to do that on both sides of the road, it could be a problem with moving poles, moving trees, moving fences. So it gives us some opportunity to then go back and target the areas that are missing a sidewalk on both sides of the street, and try to enhance that network, once we are able to deal with our existing infrastructure.
Also, the street that goes down directly to Mitchell is Tower.
Right, so this...
So that has sidewalks.
Yeah, so this represents the school walking route. So that's one of the reasons why this project was scheduled, is because our sidewalk focus has been on those routes up until this point.
But how do kids get from Paul Revere to Tower?
Actually, most of them walk to the other end of Paul Revere, who are going to Mitchell.
That's what they told us. There are sidewalks further down the street.
Right. And they just don't extend to the top of the hill.
Madam Chair? Yeah, go ahead. Are any of these streets kind of cut-throughs, where like ways is directing people on there?
So we wouldn't expect to see that, because there's a parallel route that isn't, doesn't have a lot of signals around Greendale, so running north-south and kind of around this neighborhood with...
Also, this is like truly at the top.
Yeah, we wouldn't expect to see that.
The only time I can recall of us having an issue is when we did construction on Greendale, right? Because that's where the detours were.
Right.
So, but most cars stopped lower on the hill and cut across when they were going around Greendale. To be fair, they weren't coming all the way up to here.
So you've said that the speed issue is largely coming up Tower? And I noticed that there's no stop sign at the top. So are we anticipating that pinching the road or narrowing the road only is going to keep the speed low? Or are we planning a speed table at the top, or what?
So I think we did look at whether or not you would do a four-way intersection or not. And from our engineer's interpretation, it didn't meet the warrants that would allow you to have a four-way intersection. It did to meet a two-way intersection. We do believe that narrowing the right-of-way and also creating a bit of a curve in there would have a traffic calming effect at the top of the hill.
Yeah, overall, the speed, the traffic calming strategy that's sort of key to this is bringing those others, bringing Paul Revere out and bringing that berm out, so that you have a significant speed calming effect coming southbound up the hill. And then cross-traffic from Paul Revere is going to be much more visible. So the, you know, if somebody has it in their mind that they're going to drive like a maniac, then they're going to drive like a maniac. But most reasonable drivers will be able to see everyone, the traffic will be controlled. You're not going to have somebody that takes a sharp turn, somebody takes a wide turn, somebody takes an unexpected, oh, I actually meant to go down Hoover instead, and they make a U-turn in the middle of this giant intersection. It's more controlled. So even if, even if the, this portion, this approach is not more narrow, it's still overall, the traffic calming effect will enhance the city for the whole intersection.
One of the folks who made a public comment mentioned that they were concerned about the water, you know, the effect of having so much land disturbance. It would seem to me like having reduced pavement would actually make that situation a bit better, especially where you're at the top of the hill, and it's, I mean, presumably would run off, but if we have all this impervious, impervious surface, rather, I would, I would expect that it would get better. Is that incorrect?
Yes, and you just have to correct me. Are we doing any granite curb?
Yes.
Yeah, so the granite curb will also better channelize the water than what we have currently, and pull it down to where we have catch basins on the street.
Yeah, currently, the curb is very short at the top of the hill here. So any water that's falling directly on the middle of the hill is, it doesn't take a lot of volume for that water to overtake the berm. So this is going to make a big difference. We're going to elevate the sidewalk in the sidewalk areas that we're rehabilitating, so it'll be elevated noticeably higher than existing. So that'll help channelize the water and control it, bring it down the road to where the drainage is.
And reducing the impervious surface would provide other opportunities for, instead of it sheeting off of here, it would be absorbed by the organics or the river rock or whatever we end up following.
Less falling overall.
Yeah. Kathy, you need to go?
No.
A few observations. One is, you asked my question about all the new green space. Who takes service? The abutters, right?
The abutters, yeah.
Okay, so we're replacing or adding to everyone's driveways, right? That's on the town. On 201 part of your road, they have a walkway right out the center of the house that goes straight across to what was once the road. It's up to them to either turn it or otherwise make something, I think, like double the size of the walkway. I don't care, but is the town doing that for them, or did it...
So on the previous project like this that we did with driveway extensions, we, the town built an asphalt pathway to join up with their private walkway from the extended driveway.
Okay. The town did that?
Yes.
Was there...
It would then be able to maintain afterward.
Was there prior existing walkway also asphalt? Or was it something else?
No, we talked to them before. No, we talked to them before, and we told them we can make the connection for you, but it'll be an asphalt, and that's what we did.
Okay, Paul, it's not, this part isn't a public hearing, but I, we're all noting your concern with this, and clearly there's some more dialogue to go-
Specifically with the homeowner, not in particular circumstance.
Okay. Okay. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, no, my other observation is, you know, I live in this neighborhood, I know this well, is a priority of asphalt. And when you brought up to us last time, years ago, I remember I was telling you that I would take my kids when they learned to drive up to this intersection, it was a Kobayashi Maru, try to navigate without getting killed. I'm pleased to hear that maybe there's, haven't been accidents here, but I don't think we should wait for an accident to happen before we do something. So I think this is a good proactive measure. I think the plan looks sensible. I drove through it today. It was intuitive, I got it, even with all the cones and distractions. So I think this is a win for the neighborhood.
Yeah, I, I walk this area a lot, too. Paul Revere has a very good hill for anyone who's looking to get some exercise in. But I will say that currently, when you reach the top of the hill, you're here, and you can't see across the intersection and you can't see what's coming at you. And I know, I know that the track teams use this hill for their hill repeats, which means there's packs of kids. And when the, even as an adult, this doesn't feel safe. You do feel like you have to sort of walk on people's lawns until you get to where you can see the rest of the road. So I also would say that I, this feels safer to me. Change is always very difficult, but it sounds like there's been a lot of thought and will continue to be feedback taken. So I hope that, I hope that everyone can keep an open mind. I do think that even without installing sidewalks on Paul Revere, that this is going to make a big difference, at least to that section of road, and certainly to the others as well. So appreciate the, the thought that's gone into this.
So like Kevin, this is my neighborhood, too, and I walk through this intersection at least twice a week, sometimes three times a week. I have been almost taken out by a car twice. And so I, I generally approach this intersection right now by walking literally right down the middle of the road, because that's the best opportunity for a car to see that I'm there and hopefully not hit me. So I, I think this has the potential to be a significant improvement in safety for children who are walking from there. Certainly, my son walked through that intersection every day on his way to Mitchell, along with all the other kids who gathered walking up Tower to head down to Mitchell. So I think it's a big plus for the neighborhood, frankly, overall. One of my questions was looking at the added land, right, that gets put in front of the Smith's house and in front of the house that's in, at, at the corner there. Does the town do something with registering that on a deed so that people understand? I worry that somebody might come and put up a fence and then something has to be fixed and they get told somewhere down the road that they are at risk of their fence or have to, you know, those kinds of issues. Probably that get considered.
We've done it several times, I recall, like one of the first ones was we did the intersection by the Elliott School where Cedar Street was. We don't, and what I would say is there's a lot of land that people think is their property that isn't their property. And I'll use an example. Dedham Avenue has a 50-foot right-of-way, and the road developed is about 30 feet. So there's about 10 feet on the Butters' properties that is actually town-owned land that is not town-owned land. So that's something we run into. The plot plan doesn't change, their parcel doesn't change, their deed doesn't change. It doesn't add the additional square footage in. Now, that doesn't mean that somebody who wasn't doing their due diligence may assume that that is their, their parcel. We have had issues of, you know, we're talking about doing a renovation on Mark Tree, and there are sprinkler heads and fences and bushes and all that kind of stuff that are in the right-of-way, and we tackle that when projects come up. But the reality is, this is still part of the right-of-way. We could add a sidewalk there, we could take it back as road, it, the flexibility for the town is still there, even though, you know, if somebody came to the building department with a building permit, they couldn't construct on this.
So I understand all that, I just think, you understand that? I worry about the homeowner, you know, having, having seen some homeowners on Bennington when we did that who got caught with sprinkler heads and things. It's clear that as people are putting in these systems, that they're not actually understanding all the parameters of their lot, and I don't know how we help people to understand that better. The other thing I was interested in, and I'm glad that you did mention, was do we think about a tree? How do we think about, you know, the drought-resistant plants, something that could be there that is pervious surface, but maybe not requiring being mowed all the time and needing to be watered or not watered as the case may be, so.
In, in the case of the extra property, it's not really theirs. Maybe as we do projects, we could just disseminate that information to the people affected. It certainly won't help if the house turns over or if, you know, there are other similar areas in other parts of town, but at least those people would know.
I wonder if we might create like a set of rules of thumb that might suggest that it does get noted on a deed so that somebody is clearly aware when they do a title search or something like that, where it's, if it's beyond a certain amount or, you know, you exceed adding a certain amount. Clearly, what's going down Hoover, right? I think you're adding, I don't know how many inches, it's under a foot that's getting added, I think, there. But, but there's a lot more that's getting added at the top of the hill to sort of make that a more standard intersection. Karis, this intersection, when it finishes at 24, 23, 26 feet across, is going to feel like a more standard kind of intersection that people see in other parts of town, whereas right now, as Kevin says, it's, it's an utter free-for-all up there, so.
What are we looking for, looking at for the timeline here?
So we are coordinating right now with our sidewalk consultant, our sidewalk contractor. Again, we need to have finalized plans in order to do it. That's the most involved component of it, just because of the ramps and the curb installation. And I imagine we have to order radius curb for this area, which is more challenging.
Yeah, so we've been tweaking the design, so we've been holding off on ordering the curb, the radius curb, but I think we're getting pretty close. We're projecting that the project would be, would break around in September.
I have one other question as I'm thinking about it. On the corner that comes around from Paul Revere, is it possible, if we're thinking about pervious stone, to think about stone in a shape of a walk coming around that corner? To connect with the, you know, sort of with the sidewalk that's there?
Where we locate it, having it more level and having it, yeah, we can certainly talk, again, we talk with the homeowner.
Because it's all sort of at the top of the hill there.
It certainly wouldn't be ADA accessible, but it would be okay for, you know, a kid to walk.
I'm sorry, what, what part are you talking about?
So I'm looking-
I think they're asking, instead of doing grass, can we look at doing stone potentially more like a, like a sidewalk or towards this side of the curb? But I, I think that would be important.
On, on one or the other side there, just to, to bring it around and just create a space that's outside of the street, maybe.
Okay, yeah. One thing that to keep in mind is what we have under contract for work to be done.
Okay.
So we'll have to look at what is feasible. You know, we have under, for that contractor, because we're not, we're not bidding this out as its own project, right? So we have items in that contract for asphalt sidewalk, concrete sidewalk, the curb, and then sort of smaller masonry projects, but not within those specifications, larger masonry and sort of stone and things like that.
So if it doesn't work here, I would ask that we think about that as being part of our toolkit as we're looking at this in other projects. Thank you.
I have a question. So in terms of safety, have you looked at the crash report data for this area?
Yeah, so we reached out to the police department, they don't have crashes recorded in this particular area. I think what we've heard is more similar to the anecdotal information of I nearly hit this car, I nearly hit this person, so this person nearly hit me. The neighborhood has come, and I didn't mention this at the beginning, to the Traffic Safety Commission on a series of occasions with concerns about how people navigate this intersection. So, yeah.
And then, oh, sorry.
I was just going to say, there's, one of the good things about the town is we, we don't have a lot of really high-crash areas according to Mastodot standards, which is great. And the ones that we do have, we're working to, to address those, but in residential contexts, you're typically not going to see that unless, there's, there's some rare cases when we have five-legged intersections, things like that.
On communications, this reminds me of, I mean, there have been several intersections like this, like, you know, at Carroll and Brewster, which I, I think at the time I was a little concerned, it was a lot of changes kind of like this. It turned out well. I mean, it, it's good now. I think the challenge is getting people comfortable before, like, not having to, how, how do you do that? How do you show people how it's going to look before it's done?
I think the, the layout we have right now there is probably the best option we have from a feel, and again, it doesn't feel exactly the same way, but that's why we did it. And again, we noticed, you know, a larger swath of the neighborhood, just, again, trying to get them up there. We want feedback, right? Like, that is helpful, we can, tweaking is sort of what we're talking about at this point, but we can tweak, you know, elements of it, and so getting that feedback is helpful. You know, it's interesting, we did have a person who was very concerned about that particular intersection, and after the construction was complete, we didn't hear from that resident. So I think it is, it's hard to visualize, and again, we try to provide, you know, the layout, we try to do an onsite, you know, physical layout, but I do think it's unfortunate, but it's one of those things, until you see it and you get used to it, and after a few weeks, you kind of forget it didn't used to look that way.
Yeah, one of the things about the cones, it can make it feel a little tighter than it actually is, just because the cones are so tall. Obviously, we're not going to have, you know, 10-foot curb. So it, it, it does help to visualize, but it also is a bit, you know, kind of feels like you're, you've got walls on either side of you and it's not going to look like that in the end. And the other thing is just lining up the cones. You know, you, you try to straddle the, the face of the curb as best you can, but the cones are not 2D, you know, they're, they're, so it's, it's going to be slightly narrower than it actually would be in the final construction.
And then on the sidewalk, maybe just for the board, maybe it'd be good to discuss the sidewalk policy, because I, I'm not comfortable with the idea of not adding sidewalks, so maybe we can just discuss it.
So we're expecting a recommendation to come to us from the Mobility Planning Coordinating Committee.
Okay.
That is on their charge of work to do. So we all agree that we need to have a policy, it needs to have principles, we're expecting that they're going to bring some forward.
We are pulling the budget.
Yeah, it's just never enough.
We are planning to hold, this fall, a sidewalk summit meeting with candidate neighborhoods for our pilot idea to, to get feedback on it.
And I would just add, one challenge would be, and this is like, it's just one of those things, but it's like, if you add side, like, could we add sidewalk in this one section? Yes, but that sidewalk will connect to nothing, so then how far down do you chase the problem, I think, is one of the questions that we have as well.
Yeah, we also are trying to work within budget, too.
Yep. Yeah, I'm just thinking opportunistic, like, this would be the time to do it, while you're already doing changes.
Thanks very much for the work on this project. Now we're going to talk about Great Plain Avenue. Can I ask one other question? Do you have a process that actually goes back to the neighborhood afterward and listens to see if they have any suggestions or constructive feedback that should get incorporated going forward?
So I think we've done it on a one-off basis, based on the communication, based on this meeting, based on the communication we've had out, so I guess I would say we would still love, you know, we've talked to the director of Butters, again, because we're going to be altering the, the frontage of, you know, what is in front of their property, but we would love to hear feedback from anyone who's using the facility now, if they like it, they don't like it, and if there's anything they'd like to tweak.
Yeah, and the, the notice that we sent out as a follow-up to the original notice was intended to explain the feedback that we received and then what was tweaked in the design to reflect that. And every notice we send out has my contact information at the bottom. I'm receiving feedback continuously through the process.
But it, it feels like people may think it's done when it's done, and it feels like there may be something valuable for you all to learn after people have lived with it for a few moments that could-
Like an after-action type thing?
After-action, sort of, to, is there something that can be learned that you pay forward to the next designs?
I don't, I don't know yet. We'll see how I feel after I keep driving through this one.
That's, that's a good idea.
All right. Let's move on to the Great Plain Avenue, Harris, to Dedham Town Line, marking. Thank you. I'll have a bottle on the end of it. Just drawing this online in a second, it's very large.
Yeah, it's a very long piece of road.
So I mentioned the Complete Streets Board Policy, and one of the components of the policy says that basically when we are going to do preventative maintenance, we should look at, at that time as an opportunity to look at particularly the striping plan for that location. It's one of the few times you get a complete blackboard approach and you can rethink or look at what a roadway profile should look like. This particular section of Great Plain Avenue is up for renovation. What I will say is, and again, I think we talked a little bit about coordinating with our contractors, we're hoping to get this work done this fall. It is possible it will get postponed to the spring, just in managing the different contractors we have in town that are working on roadways. So just want to say, there's a little bit more time, we think, to go through this than we had initially thought when we put this on the agenda. So what you see, again, every single change that's being made on this plan is all done in paint. None of it is done with changing curb, none of it is, it is done with making any other modifications to this particular right-of-way. And what I'll mention is, Great Plain Ave from Harris to the Town Center, which is the other component of this, was microed in, I think, 2021. And when we did the micro-surfacing there, we, we didn't have enough space, the road, Great Plain Ave is a little bit narrower as it gets to Town Center. We didn't have enough road width to do a full, what we would call legal-compliant bike lane, which is five feet. So what we did at that particular end of Great Plain Avenue is we simply painted a shoulder on, and instead of a typical shoulder wraps around the corner of a street, we didn't wrap it around the corner. So it gives the, sort of, it's a bike lane without being called a bike lane, because it's not legally compliant, we can't put the, we can't put the symbol down, but a person could bike in that area and there's no sort of striping to dissuade somebody from doing that. So this particular plan is to address a couple of things in the Complete Streets policy. So the first issue we have is that the right-of-way, the road, as it's currently marked, is excessively wide, it's between 14 and 15 feet in most locations. Again, Mastodot on the highway is 12 feet, just for context.
And you're saying per lane?
Yes, yeah, per lane.
It's a lot wider than that curb.
Yes, yeah. So one of the things we wanted to do, we've been looking at more of a 10-foot, 11-foot standard on our, our more trafficked roads, is to bring in the, the lane width as a traffic calming measure, because that is one of the ways in which, you know, we're sort of giving guidance on how to traffic, on traffic. In this particular location, that gives us a significant right-of-way that would allow us not only to add a bike lane, but add, to add a buffered bike lane in, similar to what we have on Greendale Avenue. This approach is very similar to that, in that we're not doing like green striping throughout the entire corridor, we're doing that in strategic areas when there's major crossroads. And it helps, well, so, in, in this whole corridor, the, this was actually reviewed by the Mobility Planning and Coordinating Committee, and they gave feedback on the plan. One of the things we went back and forth on quite a bit is the business section that is along this area, so across from the MBTA, there was talk, should be removed parking, not remove parking, because we couldn't fit a full bike lane in that corridor if we didn't. And we came to the conclusion that we were not going to move, remove parking as part of this project. So you'll see on the plan, but a small portion of this project heading towards Town Center in front of those businesses goes to a share-out situation. So you come off the bike lane, go through the corridor. Again, I think the goal is to try to lower speed so it's safer for a bike to be within the right-of-way, and then they will be able to get back onto the bike lane.
It's only on one side, right?
On one side is a share-out. Towards Dedham, we were actually able to put in a buffered bike lane behind the parking, because it's just such a wide area. That particular intersection was identified in the GPI study that we did, the pedestrian audit in 2017. And one of the recommendations that GPI had at the time that we continued on with was to look at bike lanes as a traffic calming feature in that, in that corridor as well. So it achieves, sort of achieves both items. We looked at a whole different array of items, we looked at cycle- We looked at a whole different array of items, we looked at cycle tracks, we looked at how to try to engineer it, and without altering the curb line, we really couldn't fit it in. So that was our solution there. I will say, it does say, no parking signs all over the plan. We do not intend on installing those signs. There is a regulation that says that you are not allowed to park on a bike lane. We were not intending on supplementing that with additional signage.
Is, absent the bike lane, as it currently is, are people allowed to park in that area?
There is no full parking restriction. I think there is a couple of areas where we do have a parking restriction.
Up to the golf course.
There is. So for this section, we preserved all that parking with stalls that would be painted. We had this conversation on Monday, just talking about this area. So I believe, right now, up to Green Street, there is two-hour parking that is signed there. So that would be a change, if we were to install bike lanes in that area.
It's on one side, though.
Part of it is on, like, I think up to here on the side, and then it goes all the way down to Green Street on the other side.
Certainly, in sledding season, should we have snow again? Lots of people that park along there.
Yeah, but, I mean, typically, sledding season and biking season are freezing. I mean, I know that there are some really hurty souls in town, but most of the time it's in.
But I mean, if it says no parking and it's illegal...
She's just saying that it won't say no parking.
We're not going to put the no parking signs up. Now, the existence of a bike lane in and of itself, from a regulatory perspective, is a de facto parking restriction. That being said, we have bike lanes in other areas of town. I have seen cars park, you know, not tons of cars, but I've seen, on a regular basis, cars on the bike lane. We haven't had reports from bikers, like, complaining to us that the bike lane is blocked. I think they're just happy to have a bike lane, so merging into the traffic for that short period of time hasn't been a challenge. But it is possible, with more bike lanes in town, that that may become more of a concern.
Would it be a ticketable offense?
I believe it is. It's effect, it's tantamount to a parking restriction.
But I would also expect that our police force, if there were snow there, would exhibit common sense.
Yeah.
I mean, to be honest, that's what they do, so...
I can talk to the police chief about what's happening on Greendale currently, because I find the conditions to be very similar. And he said he has, they've not received complaints about needing to do enforcement there.
We did get an email from a resident who lives along here, concerned about not being able to park anymore in front of the house. So today, on this side of the road, there's no signs, there's no restrictions, right? So if residents want, if they have guests or whatever, those people could park on the road currently.
And I don't think that's done a lot.
It's done rarely, I think.
It's infrequent, so I don't have, that's fine.
Yeah, a lot of those houses actually have, like, very long driveways.
I point it very similar...
I don't see people parking outside.
I point very similar to Greendale Ave, right? I mean, it's a major road, there's a high-trafficed area. Yes, you can legally park on the side of the road, but most people don't feel comfortable doing it. What you see is more transactional, right? You see trailers for landscapers or delivery people, and they're in and out, they're not sitting there.
I mean, we don't have to choose, it's kind of, we can accommodate.
Okay.
Yeah. I actually have to say that I prefer this solution here. This sidewalk is just so bonkers, most of the time, outside of Dunkin' Donuts, and it's not safe.
You mean, having the stalls painted in?
I mean, having the bikes on the street. I mean, I would just, at least you can see what's going on, whereas on the other side, there's car doors and people just jumping out of their cars, kids like, jumping out of the car to go into the Dunkin' Donuts and not looking. I don't know, I think that's a better solution, so...
More pedestrian conflicts.
Yeah. All right.
Ask another question. The striping that'll be done here, it'll be done relative to the center line, right? Because I think, I think of the Greendale striping, which is some of the very original bike lane straight, it's crazy striping, like, it's insane. And every time it gets repainted, I keep hoping it will get fixed, instead of repainting the craziness. But this is going to be painted relative to the center line, and we won't have people not clear on which lane is actually their bike lane, because they think the buffer zone is bigger than the bike lane zone, which it is in some places, to be honest.
So I think we had a chat internally about this. At the time we did Greendale Ave, it's a cost, right? So adding the hatching is much more labor-intensive than just painting a straight line. There's ways to do it in aesthetically pleasing ways. If you look at Dedham Avenue, you'll see there's hatching in that little buffer zone. If you go into one of our neighboring communities...
I'm not worried about the hatching at all. I just want, if you look at the current Greendale, right, the distance of the buffer-zone line and the bike lane line is variable from the center line, right? I'm just asking those distances to be fixed relative to the center line.
Yep, so right.
Instead of, it's like the bike lane line is connected to the curb, instead of...
I see what you're saying.
Yes.
Yep, so we have been, since this latest version was designed, we have had the consultants working on, they've conducted survey, and they're working on integrating the survey information for layouts, so that everything will be exactly as intended, as designed.
So we can have 10-foot wide lanes or 11-foot wide lanes, and they actually are, instead of some places 11 and some places 13.
Yep, because we're going to have, we're going to have detailed information for layout that, it will, it will be a different, it's a new era.
Right, that'd be perfect. Thank you, Tyler.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I understand there's a lot of hands online, so maybe a reminder that this is not a public hearing, but people can email comments?
Yes, absolutely, although I think that's probably accomplished. Nonetheless, yes, people can certainly email in their comments. You want them to go to OTM or Select Board?
Either.
Okay, either. OTM, Office of the Town Manager, at needhamma.gov, or...
Should they also go to Traffic?
We get them.
Does there one for, okay.
Yeah.
Or Select Board at needhamma.gov. But as the Town Manager has pointed out, this is not a public hearing, so we're not taking public comments, but we are listening nonetheless.
And we're happy to hear from people, just, like, we have questions, I'm sure they do also.
I'm happy to answer questions, too.
I would also add on the noticing component of it. So typically, when we do roadway resurfacing projects, we notify residents about two weeks in advance of the project. In that, we would include more documentation that would provide more clarity on the tweaked plan that we have here, so they would be able to see that in addition to just the standard notifications about how we handle a micro-surfacing project.
Okay. And a reminder for anyone online, anyone in the room, too, you can look at this plan in the Select Board packet.
Yes, because anyone been notified prior to this meeting?
We did not do an outreach. Generally speaking, when we have done paint on an already-established road that has paint, we haven't done, we've done a notification on sort of an informational basis, not a feedback basis, compared to the project that we had at Tower, which is a much more in-depth construction project. You know, when we talk about latex paint, in theory, there's a shorter lifespan, it's not as disruptive, you can repaint, you know, we micro-surface every eight years or so, so there's opportunities to tweak it. So we haven't done that as part of our normal practice, but we will be doing a notification when it comes around. Again, it may not come around until the spring.
We wanted to have a design that is final, well, not final, but it's in the form that we think is ready.
I was going to say shovel-ready designs, yes.
I, most of the concerns I've heard is about parking, and, so that, that's not just paint, I mean, it's a result of the paint, but it's more than just paint. Is there time to keep this open, so that, like, we can receive more feedback and make any tweaks in the next week, month, or so?
Yeah, so one of the things we talked about, if it was sort of more imminent, is can you just paint the edge line for the road, as opposed to painting the entire bike lane, and then come back in later and paint the bike lane? I think we do have a little bit more time to work on this, so I don't think that's necessary, and we can certainly, you know, I think it depends on what the feedback is we get, if there's certainly more of an interest, which there very well may be, in engaging in a communications effort, we can certainly do that, do a virtual format or something like that.
And again, we're not putting any new parking regulations on the books with this project. That's important for everyone to understand.
And not removing any existing parking spaces.
I, Madam Chair, just to that point, I think it might be good to notify the people and get the feedback, rather than notifying them when we're just about to do it, because I think it is, it may not be that much of a change in reality, but if people perceive it as a major change, if they think, well, I used to be able to park or have guests or whoever in front of my house, and now I can't, they may have feelings about that, and I think, you know, they should be notified and given a chance to get feedback.
Yeah. If this is just a straight-up line painting thing, I'd say do it tomorrow, but I think you're changing parking regulations, and I think that's hard enough to crack, and I think we have to consider it a bit more, so don't do it tomorrow. And then the other one is, I think by the Hershey Parking Lot, the dedicated bike lane on that side is the first one in town that will have parking, so, you know, the bike lane goes behind the cars, right? That'll be the first time it happens. I do it in Newton sometimes, it's a strange feel, it's a strange look, but we'll see how it goes.
There is a buffer to help reduce any...
Yeah, I get that. I think, no, I think for motorists, going into a parking, parallel parking that feels like in the middle of the street is a weird feel. They have to get used, people have to get used to it. It is new.
Anybody else? All right. Thanks, you both.
Thank you.
Very much. Okay, it's 6:30, so we're going to go on to the stormwater study, which I know lots and lots of people have been waiting for. Come on up, y'all. We've got Tom Ryder, we've got, hang on a second, we've got, oh, that's not my right thing. I'm sorry. Come on up and please introduce yourselves, because I've lost my sheet. I'm sorry, you're not on my sheet, so let's have questions from the floor.
I'm a town engineer, and I have Philip Paritas and Courtney Botello from Beta Group, and they've helped us with our stormwater flood studies from the 2023 event. I asked Phil if he could give the board an update.
Fantastic, thank you.
Excellent, excellent. Thanks, Tom, and good evening, members of the board. My name, as Tom mentioned, Philip Paritas with Beta Group. We've been working with the town for a number of years on various stormwater projects. And I wanted to give you a summary primarily of the flood study, but it's going to connect all of it together, except for one exception, we will not have the time to really discuss the, which way do we get to point it?
Yeah, we gotta go.
We gotta put on the...
Make sure it's on. Go. It's always a problem. Okay. Try it one more time.
Oh, yep, you got it.
Doesn't want to go forward. Go to the right.
There it goes.
There it goes.
So anyway, this is a brief summary of what I'd like to discuss. We have a little bit of a history and the challenges relative to stormwater here in Needham. We will talk about the flood study in, not in detail, we don't have a whole lot of time to do that. We will talk about the recent progress and what we've, what we've been working on, and then recommended steps based on the study. We will not be touching on, a very important part of that would be the phosphorus control plan, which is something that EPA is mandating, but we really don't have time to implement that in this conversation. So development history, Needham actually suffers because it is such a great place to live. And the, a lot of the land has been developed, there is, you know, proximity to Boston, you have great transportation, both trail, railroad and highway, a vibrant community, a safe neighborhoods, and of course, your renowned school system has made it a place for, for people to want to live and grow up and build families and whatever. So, so it significantly grew from the 1940s to the 1970s. Basically, the majority of the land was, was developed largely unregulated in terms of today's standards. So as a, as a process, many wetlands were filled, streams were either culverted or channelized to regularize the flow. Again, no lack of regulations, a lot of impervious surface was laid without any mitigation, really. And a lot of the storms, sewer system infrastructure was built during that time. So, for example, these are a couple neighborhoods, Highgate and Woodledge, which was a neighborhood that was reported to have suffered flooding in the August 8th storm, is, you can see the intersection on the left is in the middle of, really in the middle of a swamp, and on the right, it's fully developed. A similar case in Highgate, High Rock neighborhood, where the High Rock School is, was built in a swamp. That's Lynn Gate and Maple, significant areas of flooding recently, so. Also, the number of, so, yeah, so, and you'll see, here's, here's, behind the Linden and Chambers community, there's channels and culverts, and this isn't, this isn't even a very big storm, but you can see there's a lot of flow going through there. Any bigger, you know, would be flooding. Same thing for the channels, there's a lot of, a lot of directed flow, and it's, and it's high, quick-hitting because of all the impervious surface, and likely to flood very easily. So, and also, there are sections here that are, the infrastructure is non, either nonexistent or very, very under capacity. These are a couple streets, I think it's Prince, Prince Street and Coolidge and I forget the other name.
So ladder streets.
Yeah. It really doesn't impact this neighborhood, because they're at the top of the hill. What happens is that it runs down the gutter, inundates Harris Ave and the, and the streets below it, and that's where floods, because there's just not enough capacity to get it into the system or pipe size. So there's, there's a few areas like that in our study as well. And, so, and also, the current, the current practice is to tear down all those 1940s and 1950s houses that are fairly small, modest homes, and build these fairly extensive homes, twice the size, three times, maybe, large driveways and, and, yeah, and, you can see the picture. Okay, well, whatever. So, so we have, yeah, okay, this is the same neighborhood, but between 2000 and, oops, 2000, 2004, you can see it fills in, a lot of the houses are reconstructed, larger houses, and obviously more impervious surface as a result. Climate change is also a big issue these days. We are getting less rainy days, we're getting more rain in the winter, less in the summer, but when they are, when we do get rainfall events, they are much more intense and require... This is an example of the 10-year storm. The 10-year storm is typically Mast Doughties year event for designing streets. They require, at a minimum, everything to be designed for the 10-year storm event. In 1960, the rainfall data says that a 24-hour storm was at 4.6 inches, and then the projected storm event for the 2070 event is over 7 inches. So that's almost two and a half inches just in that, that small storm event. So the flood study, we, it was a reaction from the town to, to study the, there was a severe storm event, August 8th... storm event, August 8th, 2023. Many neighborhoods got flooded and severely crippled the town in some areas. So the town hired us to look at, look in at what were the causes? What can we do to fix those? And we found many of these issues. The wetlands being filled were, there was three or four of them, areas in the whole neighborhoods, that's where the water used to flood, that's where it floods now. You know, it's hard to overturn that, but the culverts, small culverts areas, there's not enough, you know, channelization to get the water out of that neighborhood fast enough and such. There's also unique features. You've got the railroad crossing three ways through the town. And those are longstanding, either burns or swales that, you know, it's very difficult to work with the MBTA to change any of that, to do any work. And so there are some physical barriers there in that situation. Also, it has been the practice of, you know, in order to solve a problem quickly, there's been a lot of patchwork systems, just install another pipe or, you know, work, try to figure it out. That may solve the problem in one neighborhood and push the problem to another. So it's not an abnormal thing for many of the similar towns in Massachusetts, but it is, it is an issue. We did add another slide that showed the regulations that were in place. The first, the first really design issue or design standard was in 1961. The TP 40, the Technical Paper 40 was issued, it really, it set the rainfall data, but the rainfall data was, the rainfall data was from the period 30s through the 50s. And that was, actually turned out to be a drought period, you know, if you remember the dust bowls and, you know, stuff like that. So that was a low period then. In 1972, Massachusetts developed the Wetlands Protection Act, and that prevented any more filling of wetlands, but it really didn't do much in terms of standardizing how stormwater management was conducted. It wasn't until the 1996 that Mast D E P came out with their stormwater standards. And even in that case, it was primarily directed to protect wetlands. Well, in Needham, you've already filled in all your wetlands. So again, it wasn't a standard that was held to because there was no, you know, and developers will tell you, you know, you can't tell me not to do that, you know, whatever. So anyway, so a lot of the development that already happened in Needham was happening was kinda unregulated or underregulated or undesigned. And so, you know, the conclusion is really, there's no one solution. It's years of poor or unregulated decisions that were made, designs that were done, and it's gonna take the same number of thoughtful, purposeful decisions to correct those. So in the flood study itself, there were many neighborhoods that were flooded. Can't go through all the details, but we did recommend that regulations be thought through again. You know, I know we're going through some changes now, but even more in terms of can you fill your property, you know, how deep you wanna go into the, you know, with the deep sellers or full-size sellers, people are going into the groundwater and they're gonna have to pump that, you know, and you have a base flow now. So there's all kinds of engineering things that should be thought through and how to address those. Again, the increase in the runoff alone is gonna offset that one inch of infiltration right away, right? So the, also, what we've been, what we've been seeing as we've done the, done some of the work we'll describe later, is that the mapping of the infrastructure in town is very weak. It's very, it's very difficult to quickly do an assessment or model something or design something because of the, it's either inconsistent or has been changed or, you know, it's incomplete. So we need to do that. And we're also seeing the need for a public-private partnership. There are many developed commercial and industrial land that, you know, on Chestnut Street or other neighborhoods where there's a lot of runoff from these, you know, older developments that just go right onto the stormwater system in the street. It's inundated and that starts the problem. It cascades as we go down through the neighborhoods. So we would wanna think through about the possibility of working with them to help them to meet their permit, which DEP has come out with a permit requirement for them, so we can work with them and trying to solve some of these issues. And also install some infiltration or storage systems and combine opportunity there. And then, what's next?
Restoring some flood storage on properties throughout town. During the flood study, we looked at a number of parks and fields as places to put infiltration and additional storage under. The town could also consider if there are any properties that are up for sale, if they're in opportune storage areas or if they're already being flooded out, they might be opportunities to buy.
Thank you. And then fundamentally, I think that the town needs to, you'll see as we've looked through all the, just about every street is, the stormwater system is, doesn't meet this current standards, either capacity or treatment or both. So really, you need to start thinking about doing it, stormwater as part of every capital improvement project, either little, small or big, if you're doing a large area. But in order to reverse the trend or the situation, it needs to be thought through on every, every project, unfortunately. And then when it comes to designing or doing these improvements, it really needs to be a holistic effort. We need to be able to assess what's gonna happen if we improve it over here, what's gonna happen downstream or, you know, how that all's gonna be integrated together. Can we, can we do some improvements up here to relieve the problems down here? And so modeling, we recommend, you know, I think we had like seven, six or seven watersheds that we recommend you model because they're just too complex. There's, you know, problem areas and we don't wanna, again, flood out someone else. So, so fundamental, so in, during the process of the study, we developed a potential 40 projects and they're all various types. There's bypass, there's structural upgrades, there's, you know, commercial cooperation areas that we can do. They are listed in the, in the study and we've developed a map for each watershed that we, that we expect to see improvements. These were the most affected by the rainfall event and such, so can't really read them on the screen here, but each one of them is a watershed area that we've evaluated. The orange areas are the flood areas that we identified. The green areas are kind of the watershed limits. Some of the, some of the red areas are improvements? I can't, I can't.
No, I think the red areas, no catch basins or drainage, right?
Okay. Anyway.
Well, we have reports that are associated with each of these maps, so we can go through those more in depth.
And then there is a executive summary that you should have that lists out all the projects that we expect. So recent progress, we just wanna go through what we've been working on in order to get a handle on this and to be able to start moving forward. In 2018, the town did a watershed map or watershed plan. Basically, we broke up the town into 16 different watersheds so that we could break them up and evaluate them individually and see if there's a way to do a holistic approach to those areas. And back in 2022, we did an evaluation of Watershed 2, and that included everything related to the EPA permit that was included, as well as looking at opportunities to really improve Walker Pond. There was a lot of talk about, you know, the phosphorus loads at the Walker Pond. So we did that evaluation and we also looked at the, yeah, all of the requirements with the EPA. And then we developed a watershed design in 2024 and, you know, implementing improvements to the Walker Pond and the Gordon Field areas. We include stormwater control measures in the recent, or the ongoing water main work in South Street, Central Ave. Back in 2023, the town implemented their stormwater utility, which is gonna be a huge asset for future work. Watershed 4 and 5 were evaluated in 2024 and as it also, it can, in conjunction with the studies, the flood studies. So we have a fairly good idea, especially those are the most complicated areas, Watershed 4 and 6. Ongoing projects right now include encadment investigations and data collection for the MS4 tasks. We are in the process of designing a new culvert for George Aggett Culvert, which was severe flooding there. We are also doing, we're just about to start, once we get the notice to proceed from DEP, the stormwater asset management, which we will be gathering all the information as we discuss for the systems in Needham. So hopefully enough data that we can start modeling them. The next steps, really just making sure we have a careful review of all development projects. It's nothing, you know, I wanna emphasize the fact that we need to put in stormwater improvements in all your projects. Stormwater management, we wanna complete the mapping and accurate data collection for all your assets. We want to start developing multipurpose projects, including, you know, storage for storm events, but also treatment to meet the requirements of the phosphorus control plan. We recommend the town seek funding for the design and construction as much as you can get, really, through grants, allocation. It is gonna be expensive. And then pursue, we recommend that the town develop a program to pursue inventory and monitoring of private stormwater control measures so that we can start taking credit for, and this is part of the phosphorus control plan that I didn't wanna talk about, but it's very important that we continue to improve in those areas. So, and I think that's it, right?
Yep.
So, yeah.
Yeah, and just to kind of, while we're talking about like what we're currently working on, a lot of this is the background work, laying the foundation for future projects. A lot of the data collection is just to make sure we have a really good grasp on the stormwater system before we start looking at doing those models and then eventually incorporating that work into projects. But we are still at the very beginning of that process.
Well, this is an enormous volume of work, very, very comprehensive, so much appreciated. Clearly will take decades to complete. As you said, it took us decades to get to where we are. Katie, the stormwater plan that we received as part of our packet was actually not part of our packet, was a separate document. Where can the public find that?
It will be posted.
Yeah, we will, we will put it on.
Okay, cuz the, cuz the plan that you guys have put together is actually a much larger document than the one that is in our select board packet in this presentation. So I want everyone who, especially those who have had flooding experiences, to be able to see the depth of the work that you have done, cuz each site was visited, many of them twice, and there's detailed plans for, you know, prioritizing and mitigation and everyone deserves to be able to see that.
Right, and I just wanna caution, we visited the sites that reported flooding.
Yep.
So there are probably many, many areas in town that did flood that we didn't, you know, we didn't, A, have the time or, B, we didn't, we wanted to pinpoint exactly what was reported.
Sure. And I will say that a lot of the sites that are included in the larger report still need more work. There is modeling yet to be done. It's not complete, but it is a huge start. I guess, I'm sure that everyone here has lots of things to ask. One of the things that caught my eye, and I honestly don't remember if it was this or the larger book that we received, but one of the, one of the things that was noted here was that our stormwater bylaw only requires us to capture one inch of rain on our impervious surfaces. We do have two of our members who are part of the stormwater bylaw committee to redo that. The new bylaw is looking at 1.5, and I'm wondering if you have thoughts on whether that's enough, what you would recommend in an ideal world, what you're seeing, you know, in comparison to towns similar to ours?
Yeah, yeah, so, what I would like or what.
What's realistic and reasonable?
So we, I participated in the Ponza River Watershed Association. They're doing a flood study of, I work in the town of Westwood primarily as a town engineer, but, but they did a study and the real impact didn't start till four or five inches of recharge. But having said that, I don't know of anybody, except maybe Cambridge, over two inches. We just, we just helped Norwood update their regulations to two inches. And I don't know.
Brookline, I think, has five and a half.
Yeah.
Brookline, okay.
Yeah.
That's the crazy one, yeah.
Yeah, we went through a couple of neighboring communities. We looked at some of their regulations and it was primarily their one or two inches.
Yeah, yeah. So anything that densely developed, that wiped away all their wetlands is in trouble. So, so Brookline would make sense, you know, any filling in Boston, it's gonna be an issue.
I haven't seen water towns yet, but I heard they was pretty.
I think water towns is pretty restrictive as well, yeah.
So I think it needs to be thought through. Obviously, we don't wanna restrict development. The problem is, you have small lots, you have big homes, there's, now there's no place to put them, you know, to put the recharge systems or whatever. You may have to, I don't know, restrict sizes of homes or something like that, you know?
Yeah.
You just can't keep adding.
Would the engineering restrict it?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, yeah, I think, yeah, they have to be stored or recharged. You know, again, the problem with the developments in the wetlands is you can't recharge there because they're all wetlands, you know? That's all, you know, so it's doing a double duty of impact, you know?
Thank you. I'm sure that everyone here has questions. We'll just start at one end of the table and go on down. Kevin, do you have any?
No, actually, my question is, have you looked at our stormwater bylaw proposed?
I did. The bylaw itself is not restrictor, it's, it's, it's. It's how you're gonna implement it. It's the regulation piece that needs to come.
Right.
So the bylaw itself is, you know, maybe increasing the quantity of, I mean, infiltration, but they implement, you know, for instance, restricting fill. But they implement, you know, for instance, restricting fill and, you know, do an analysis of what happens if you, we looked at one property in, in, in one of the problem areas, and they raised their, their yard four feet. So their, their lot doesn't flood anymore, but.
It creates war.
Gets worse, right, right. So, so things like that will need to be thought through. I don't, I don't think the bylaw needs to change. I think it's a regulation piece, like how, how much, you know, maybe restricting excavation into the groundwater. So you're not pumping, you don't have to pump it.
Right.
Because if you build out a cellar in the, you know, you got to have a waterproof system or whatever, so.
We're two feet above water table, right? What's the regulation?
No, we don't, we don't have a regulation for that. Some towns do.
Yeah. Newton, Natick, I know, they have two full offsets.
Anything else to them?
No, keep going.
All right, Kathy?
I wanted to say, I found this so educational, reading about this, and it really helped me understand a lot of things. And one of the things that really struck me was the interdependent nature of it. And you guys were very clear, it's not enough to just put in bigger pipes. And if you do something in one area, you can impact another area. And I think that's difficult to understand, but very important as we think about this. And one of the things that, and again, I, I am not familiar with this stuff, but you have all these different watersheds. Would it be true to say, within the watershed, there is this independence? But is there also interdependence between the watersheds? Like, if you were looking at one watershed, could you sort of create a system that works for that watershed and not have to worry about other neighboring watersheds? Or is it even that more complex where you have to look at the whole wide area?
Yeah, yes. So it's a combination of both. Watershed six is actually within watershed four. Watershed six is, is the area that we showed you that on Bird Hill, Wedge, Woodland.
Yeah.
That, that neighborhood is, was a swamp. Well, now it's filled in. Well, now it's developed.
Yeah.
The pipe system to get the water out is not big enough. And then it goes through watershed six. So you make that watershed pipe bigger, then you, then you're adding to the flooding, and it actually ends up in the Needham reservoir, which flooded during that event too, because we, we made improvements in another area that directed more water to it. So, so it's, it's a combination of both. There are some areas, you know, for instance, to Rosemary Brook, or Sportsman's Pond there, you know, those, those will have to be evaluated, because you may, we would recommend trying to deal with the stormwater in, in the particular watershed. I went to a stormwater symposium or something like that. We, we had a discussion, a bunch, a bunch of engineers, and it, someone made a statement, it's not, it's not, it's not going to flood. We have to decide where it's going to flood, because, because of its, you know, the systems, so.
And I, I think one thing that's helpful for me to think about, at least as I've been going through this, is for the watersheds that we have broken down, this is where we would expect all the surface water flow to go. A lot of these systems are also interconnected. So you'll see, you know, some of these overlaps between watersheds, like watershed four and six, where you wouldn't necessarily expect it. But because of the way the system was designed, you're moving the water between those, like, surface watersheds.
Okay.
And also, it all flows to the Charles. If the Charles floods, you know, which is, it's, it's happened. I think part of the problem was that that storm, especially all the DPW facility flooded, because the Charles was flooded too, so.
Yes. I guess it also, what it says to me is that it makes it difficult to prioritize. Like, if you do one thing only, and it impacts other things negatively, I mean, are there things that you have to do multiple things all at once? Otherwise, it doesn't work.
So, yeah, so there are, there are certain things that that could be done, and we, we didn't go through the proposed.
Storage.
Yeah, the storage. So we're proposing that, that the town look at, one of the projects we're looking at is Broad Meadow School. There's a, there's a big field. It's, it's the low area in the whole neighborhood. It floods currently, right there, the last.
Next one.
And so it floods currently. So we think we can make that a, 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 a storage area so that we can collect water, and it'll reduce the flow. We can control the flow out of it. If we do that, it's much easier than trying to make a pipe bigger and getting, getting out faster. So, storage projects are probably the priority. Infiltration, if we can, if in good soils, storm treatment because of the phosphorus control plan that we have to administer and such. So those are the, making pipes bigger is not necessarily, although we have to capture the water. Making them bigger to convey them somewhere else is not, is risky, is more risky, so.
And the, the thing about some of these projects, and the way that this system was built and put together, is that there are some areas that are just easier to deal with than others. Not everything's connected, so there are places, like the Broad Meadow School, where we have a pretty good idea of what the system looks like, and we're able to do the storage. But that's why the mapping and the modeling is such an important component, so that we really know what's going on before we start, you know, looking at these solutions.
So even in this, this situation, I don't know if you can see, but the red pipes on the down gradient of the ball field there, there's three, there's two 24-inch pipes and a 12-inch pipe, all coming to an 18-inch pipe.
Oh.
So, I mean, that's kind of the, the hodgepodge of systems.
And that 18-inch pipe soon the MWRAs right away.
Right, right. And that discharges to, you know.
So it makes it difficult to upgrade that pipe.
You talked about land purchasing. What do you envision? What do you mean? What are we shopping for?
So I think, I think you want to look for areas, A, that are problematic now, B, that could be, that are situated in the watershed that could be retrofitted for storage.
Okay.
And/or infiltration.
Like a residential lot?
Yeah.
Buy the house, okay.
There's, there's no place, you know, I mean, we, we tried to, we maxed out the town facilities, all the, all the schools, all the, you know, Defazio or, or.
So buying back a wetland.
Here's, we have existing easements already that may be expanded.
Right, right. Well, not, maybe not back to a wetland, but maybe it's a subsurface storage facility.
Okay.
Okay, so you can use the field, but it's, but it's underneath, it's, it's an open, either infiltration or storage facility.
And part of that is just looking for opportunities as they arise, you know, if there is an opportunity, and it's, it happens to be in one of those locations, it might be something to consider.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Josh?
I was also impressed with this. It was very detailed, and I still haven't digested it all. How, Needham is one of the few towns I know of that's surrounded on three sides by a river. In terms of water infrastructure, what are our comparison towns?
I would assume Wellesley's not too dissimilar. Newton, probably. Just, just in the proximity, probably the same era of development and such. I don't know, you know, I don't work in those towns, so I don't know topographically and how they.
Is that a relevant question, like?
So, no, no, it is. I mean, I know Framingham is a similar situation in terms of pipe sizes and infrastructure. Everything was built really before there were standards. Like, any, if you see any road with less than 12-inch diameter pipes, that was built, you know, and it is quite a bit. And I know I did projects in Framingham when there was eight-inch pipes. So, you know, it's.
Well, I guess I was thinking, because we're surrounded by water, does that have an impact on our water table, the height of our water table?
There's, there's quite a few sections in Needham that, that are elevation, quite a bit of elevation change. It would be more close to the river, and, you know, I, I, I think it's, it's not too dissimilar to, to a lot of towns. There's, there's enough elevation. It's not like we're in Florida, where it's like flat everywhere, but.
So when, in areas where it might have a high water table, or we can't purchase land, could, is there a benefit to surface water storage rather than subsurface water storage?
Yeah, it's cheaper. It's just, you know, obviously, in, in the current wetlands regulations, you can't store water in wetlands either. So anything really close to the river is, is, that may be wetlands you can't use for storage. But you could develop, you know, there's, there's not a lot of open land in Needham that would be amenable to ponds right now, unless you take out a golf course or two.
Just to call the water hazard.
Last thing I was thinking about is in watershed four, which is one of the flood-prone areas, by the reservoir with DPW and Defazio, and we're, you know, right now in the midst of discussing how we deal with those areas in terms of development. How does develop, or can, can water mitigation projects be integrated such that they overcome the negative effects of development?
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think you got to implement a lot of, a lot of low-impact development techniques, you know, what I heard earlier about removing pavement and sidewalks. Those are all good things to do. I think the key will be modeling to make sure, because it can be so fickle. You could, you know, change something. But, but there's, you know, you could do, you could stage your storage where, you know, you're up, up the hill, you store a lot, and then, you know, you could regulate it that way. You know, again, offer, offer incentives for people to provide porous driveways, porous sidewalks, you know, stuff like that.
They have to be maintained.
Yeah, yeah. Well, someone's maintaining it, you know.
Some should be, but often they don't.
Yeah, no, I know, exactly. So, it, it, it needs, unfortunately, stormwater management is not like, you know, your sewer systems, so your water systems, or your electric systems, where everybody needs it every day. They only need it when it's not, when it's flooding. And unfortunately, people have short memories, like, why are you spending so much money on this, you know, and, and, you know, they don't see the need. And, and or they don't see the environmental impact of, you know, the, the Walker Ponds being completely, you know, filled with phosphorus or whatever, situations like that, that, that people don't understand.
Thank you.
Mary, are you anticipating that one of the outgrowths of your plan is going to be identification of some particular areas where the town should consider being open to the purchase of property?
So we got to be careful in terms of that, you know, just in terms of how that, how that all comes down.
Right.
We would also want to make sure we have a good model in place to see if, if it's financially responsible to, to purchase a property, which may not have as much impact as we'd like, or may not be in the location or the situation. So before we point fingers to any particular project, property, we want to make sure we think it's going to be beneficial to the town.
I also just add to that, you know, if, if there are parcels that we think are advantageous, that would be something that we would want to discuss in executive session to not.
Correct.
Impact our negotiating position.
Correct. But it, it just seems to me like, the longer we go on, once the property gets redeveloped, it becomes more expensive. So understanding at least parts of town where we may generically have some interest in creating storage that are not previous wetlands or, you know, essentially trying to build a wetland in a wetland, would be useful to have that understanding. I think I wrote a note to a couple of people today. It would be helpful to me to see a map of the town streets mapped with these watershed districts, just because I, I look at all of this, and I still get lost about which neighborhoods are really in which watersheds. So it just would be helpful, as I'm reading through the different suggestions in the timeline.
Okay, we can.
We have the 2018, which has been updated a few times. So we do have it in 24, but I think it's 24 by 36.
Yeah, we have the.
I'll give you a PDF or a plot, however you like.
And I guess the other thing that I think about in this discussion is, Needham is taking a very different approach to stormwater, at least on the phosphorus side, right, than we see happening in Newton or in Wellesley. And while I know that citizens of the town don't understand that, Newton and Wellesley have the two highest stormwater fees in the state. They are exponentially higher than the town of Needham's. And I don't think that people understand that this approach, while it is, I think it's actually a more thoughtful approach, but it is going to require some responsibility on the part of homeowners to maintain stormwater systems once they get implemented. And so, yes, there's savings for the homeowner in that, that I don't know that people appreciate that they're getting by this approach. But there's also, you know, an obligation that's going to come with that to, to maintain it going forward.
Yeah, we may want to revisit that approach, so.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm just picking up on Josh, what you said earlier, thinking about, we're going to make a decision about where the Pollard School goes, and Defazio was one of the places. And I guess I'm just making the comment that, you know, I hope your thinking or somebody's thinking goes into it, so we have a full cost estimate, you know, that incorporates whatever stormwater mitigation, you know, not just like a standard per square foot, that we have a fully baked cost that includes everything, which would include this. Like, if one site has much greater stormwater mitigation costs, it may erase, you know, the savings of being at that site. I don't know, but I just, I'm kind of noting that is something that I think we need to really understand.
Phil, can I ask you to talk briefly about the impact that is possible for homeowners to have? I mean, we talked about, I've heard you mention infiltration, you know, in the case of new construction. But I think that there's, there's other things that homeowners could do. And I'm wondering if, if Needham homeowners were to sort of, as some kind of group, decide that instead of lawns, they were going to plant native species and so on, things that suck up more water, if they were going to reduce their impervious surfaces, either by porous driveways, as you just mentioned, or other ways. What could the impact of that be? Because, because while the town certainly bears a lot of this responsibility, this is going to be an ongoing project that is going to cost a lot of money. But if there's a, if there's a way that individual homeowners could have an impact, that's something that we would like to also.
Right, right.
Incentivize.
Yeah, yeah. So you touched on kind of the major ones, infiltration, recharge, potentially using rain barrels for, you know, their own irrigation or such, or even storage facilities for that, where they don't, don't require discharge to, of their water. Unfortunately, most fully developed lots have little opportunity, unless they're thought through before they're developed, you know what I mean? So, but not, not adding to it, you know, not increasing your driveway, or your, you know, your patios, or your pools, or.
Also perhaps planting trees and.
Yeah, yeah. The more trees, right. Unfortunately, with climate change, we're going to have, it's, it's going to be a problem in winter, because the trees are dormant, or most trees are dormant, but that's when you get the most rainfall. So it's, it's a, it's a mixture. But, but it would help, trees. a, it's a mixture. But, um, but it would help. Trees, uh, kind of regulate the temperature as well, uh, and, and, and neighborhoods and heat island effects and all that kind of stuff, so.
Anybody else have additional? Well, I expect we'll be seeing you repeatedly.
Yeah, I think, I think we should have a conversation about the phosphorus control plan, because that's a major, um, part of this that, that we probably want to follow up with and, and kind of incorporate how we're, we're trying to do that as well at the same time of, you know, all this other things.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for this work, and we'll be seeing you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Juan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to have a discussion now of ambulance charges and their potential abatement. So we're going to welcome Dave Davidson back.
Madam Chair, there's, um, a citizen had submitted a letter requesting that, uh, the bill that the person received for ambulance services, uh, be cut, uh, in, effectively in half. Um, and it's important to, uh, to remember as, uh, was stated, that it is not a financial hardship, uh, that, that multiple times as well as going in collection agency. So just a disagreement about what the fee is and, um, and try to, um, link that to transparency as, uh, service should have been disclosed before the service was provided. Um, as the board could understand, since the town provides only emergency ambulance response services for responding to an emergency and having a constructive conversation about what the pricing's going to be, it, it's just not conducive. Um, the individual, I did have different correspondence. I actually asked about, uh, what the person thought transparency could consist of. Um, it did suggest something like having the prices on the webpage. There's nothing wrong with that. We can certainly do that. I cannot imagine if there's a medical crisis, that the first thing someone's thinking of is not calling 911, but running to the, their computer to check the website to see the price. So it's just, uh, it's just, cost was surprising to the individual because of the individual's type of health plan. Um, the full cost of this would be borne by the individual. That did not seem to be a concern if it was being paid by the insurance company. And that's where we get into a problem where if, um, if you effectively cut the bill in half, you've really stated that's the price, and that's what the insurance companies would be looking at. You cannot pick and choose what the rate structure would be. There are allowances for contractual purposes. Uh, there's allowances for financial hardships when they come into place, but the fact is you can't pick and choose the rates, uh, effectively rigging a rate structure. And there are prohibitions, certainly with the governmental entities, which whatever your published rate is, is if you drop the rate in half, that's your published rate. Considering a significant number of our ambulance runs are associated with elders. Um, the Medicare would be looking that our rate would be not what it currently is if we were to reduce it by 50%. And they don't pay 100% of that cost. They pay a percentage of it. The ramifications of that is, in order to continue the service, we would have to shift the cost effectively onto the tax levy for everyone to pay, or, uh, which I think would be a, a greater cost is not to have the service. And the idea that someone could suffer a greater injury or death over a 50% reduction in the bill, it, I, I, I don't think that's a good practice.
Can you just remind us when our ambulance rates were last raised?
Uh, they were last, uh, the last changes were in 2019. Um, and then we added to a pause during COVID times. Um, and our rates are in comparison in the area some of the lowest, which the individual was appreciative of, but, uh, but still felt they were, um, were too, uh, too high. And I can certainly appreciate the sticker shock, but as noted, it's emergency ambulance services. We have to have equipment to respond to most any situation. It's an emergency transport, not routine. So there's great demand wear and tear on the emergency vehicles. Uh, then a trip that transporting someone from a hospital to a rehab center, for instance, that's scheduled in advance. They know exactly what equipment is needed, what level of training the individual, uh, the staff that would be involved in that particular transport. So the costs are, are not as much. Cost is still expensive. They're not Uber rates. And, uh, and the fact is that providing emergency medical transport or any kind of transport involving the care of an individual, uh, is more expensive than just routine transport. And that is true in this case as well.
Okay. And Dave, separate but related, you are going to plan to bring us back? A look at rates and whether our rate should change?
Yes. In fact, uh, the fire chief, uh, has, uh, reached out to me, uh, several times over, uh, since last fall about looking at the rates. But with the changes and things that are happening with Medicare and with, uh, with Medicaid, we need to see how, uh, those rule changes would impact, um,
Yes.
impact reimbursements. And we would certainly want to, uh, be methodical in terms of the rates that we have. Because the other thing that there, um, that is problematic, you just can't keep changing your rates, uh, three months later, uh, three months later to catch up. Uh, once you make a determination of a rate structure, you gotta live with it for a little while. Um, the, um, other thing is, um, which I had done a lot of research on this and why it took a little longer, is some of the aspects about transparency. And I mentioned, um, to the board, uh, that some of the, there is some requirements of disclosure, which, uh, ambulance services are not subject to that disclosure of having a conversation on routine, uh, medical care. And in fact, I think anybody who's been to a medical establishment, one of the first things they make you sign is that you're aware that you'll be, may be responsible for costs that are not covered by your, uh, insurance policy because it's, uh, outside a district. In this case, uh, even if these rules were applied to the ambulance, in this individual case, the rates wouldn't have been any different. It is because of a deductible in the plan. Everybody is expected to know their own health plan. It is not up to anybody, it's not up to any medical provider to know your health plan. It's not up to any governmental entity to know your health plan. You need to know your health plan. And if there are copays and deductibles, you're still responsible for that. And that transparency in the pricing is, even if you were to go to outer district and were unaware that you were in an outer district, they can still charge you what you would have had to pay based upon your insurance policy. So even though that, uh, those, um, requirements do not come into play in, in this situation, if they had applied, it is unlikely that that would have been a successful challenge either. And, uh, uh, and, and what I'm referring to is the No Surprise Act, which, uh, became effective January 1st, 2022.
Question.
Madam Chair, so I, I don't see a reason to abate this, um, but medical debt is a huge issue in this country and transparency is a part of that. In addition to putting prices on the website, could we just have a laminated sheet in an ambulance, not for, for the ENT to, to go through it every time, but just in case anyone asks for it, it's something that's easy that can be handed to the patient?
If they make it into the ambulance, they're already being transported and they're going to be charged.
It, it's, well, it's not that. The real concern of that is, are you sending a message, oh,
Yeah.
you probably shouldn't be riding the ambulance.
I'd hate to see someone deny themselves care.
Deny themselves care. It is frowned upon, even the places where you have the disclosure when you're signing, going to the, you're not seeing upfront pricing.
Yeah. And I, I would say also, as a former healthcare worker, though I did not work in this kind of emergent situation, if you have someone who's in the middle of a crisis, as a provider of healthcare, you need to be focused on that person's crisis, not how much it may cost them. I mean, I think, you know, we, we hire really incredibly talented and highly trained people to take care of patients, not to get involved in negotiations or, or discussions over pricing. So I think we need to make it possible for those healthcare providers to provide healthcare and, and not worry about anything else. Though I do understand where you're coming from. Because, I mean, all of us have had a crazy sticker shock, um, over something in healthcare. And certainly, an ambulance ride can really throw you for a loop. But I agree with you, but the price to the consumer is highly variable because of our intervening healthcare system. It's not going to be the same for everyone, but it has to be the same, it has to be standard from us. And, uh, and if someone makes a choice to, to have a high deductible plan, that's totally understandable. But we can't, the town can't put on top, the rest of the taxpayers, the consequences for that decision, you know, I think. So, anyone else?
Uh, Madam Chair, I just wanted to emphasize how lucky we are in Needham to have the kind of service that we have from our fire department, that we have advanced life support service that is not available in many other towns. Our ambulances come very quickly, which is not true in other towns. We have a hospital, but, but also those, those, um, firefighters who are there and the ambulance will give advanced life support, which, again, is not available. And this saves lives. This is an incredible service. And to maintain it, we have, you know, we have to cover it. And it's a fixed cost. And I think it comes through in, in what you did, Dave, for us, but it's a fixed cost. You have to have the equipment always there, always maintained. You have to have a certain number of staff, always there, always maintained. Whether there are crises that night or not, the cost is the same. So we have to cover that fixed cost. Otherwise, that ambulance is not ready for you when you need it to save your life. So I think this is so special that we have this. To risk this through the reasons that, that you have stated is, is just unthinkable to me. Um, because yes, if we, if we abate here, then that changes the price, then the whole structure falls down. And we face the choice that you set, which is either to not do it or to put it on the taxpayer. So, I mean, I think we should remember what we have that is so special here and, and preserve it.
Um, thank you for the memo. It was a great memo. And I think this is a good conversation to have because I think everyone's a little bit vague on what does it cost when you go for a ride in an ambulance. Um, so this conversation's very helpful. Um, but I am not inclined to support the applicant for the abatement. Um, I think the issue is the deductible. And I think, um, that's between them and the insurance company, not us. Um, I think when there's a medical emergency, there's sort of a decision tree, either call your doctor, get to the doctor, get to the hospital. If you can't get there yourself, you call it an ambulance. And I think along that decision tree, you're sort of effectively possibly signing up for the ride. Um, and that's between, then it goes to the insurance company. But I don't think it's, um, it's good to know that there's a cost, but in this crisis situation, let's not make cost the criteria. So I would, I would vote against this.
So I'm also not in favor of an abatement in this case. And I, I also think that it's challenging, in fact, to consider one at this point because I believe that the insurance company presumed that this much was going toward the deductible and may have made different decisions on other payment things that came in subsequent to this, you know. So again, this is between this person and their insurance company. Um, the town's rate is not usurious, actually, when you look at it relative to the service that's provided and other pricing. I don't think we have anything to change here. I understand that the person has sticker shock, and I'm sure we all would in that moment. But
I think we've all been in this situation, whether with ambulance fees or something else. So I do have sympathy, but I can't support the abatement. So, does anybody want to move?
Yeah. Madam Chair, I move that the board does not vote to approve the abatement request for ambulance bill 24-238825 issued on December 20th, 2024, for a service date of September 18th, 2024.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Much appreciated. All right. Uh, Town Manager.
Evening. Um, my first item is to ask if you would, uh, call for and open a special town meeting warrant. We have our special town meeting coming up on October 20th, 2025. Um, at your last meeting, we shared a preliminary list of articles. Um, this is that basically in draft warrant form. Uh, the only new item since your last meeting is a general bylaw amendment around doc, dog licenses. Uh, the town clerk, uh, is able to come into your meeting on the 9th and talk through what those changes are proposed to be. I would say, um, high level, it's, uh, there's been changes in law around kennel license, licensing. Um, the clerk's interested in some language around service dogs and, um, having the town clerk be the enforcement agent for, uh, dogs that are not licensed, as opposed to that meeting to be a police department function. And the clerk has been in touch with the police department on that. So she can share much more at your next meeting, but just high level, that's kind of what she's looking at there. Um, in terms of, um, before you take your vote, um, just thinking ahead for presentations that the board is going to want, uh, leading up to town meeting, um, again, at, on the 9th, we'll have, uh, the clerk in on dogs. Um, I think tentatively, um, I'm looking at September 24th for the hearing on stormwater, if the regulations are ready. Um, there's only three meetings before town meeting after tonight, so that's the middle one. Um, uh, so I'll keep you posted if that, um, schedule changes at all. Um, and accessory dwelling units in terms of zoning bylaw, my understanding is that that is going to go to May, but I'll know for certain, um, tomorrow because the planning board's meeting right now. So I, I, at this point, expect that that will fall off the warrant. Um, and this will continue to evolve. Uh, you will close it at your meeting on the 9th.
And so we have until then, uh, with regard to the quiet zone, what is the timeline there? Because I know we're, we're still waiting for, for information on the MBTA, but are we going, even if we got that at this point, would we have enough time to
So
needs to come after?
When you close the warrant, we can't add articles after, um, but we, if there's things that we think, um, might be able to still come together in detail later on, we'll put a placeholder. So quiet zone is on there right now as a placeholder, and you can withdraw at any point all the way up to the night of town meeting. Um, so I think it's a decision of, um, when do we feel like we have enough information? But if there's something, um, like the quiet zone, I'd lean on the side of having it in the warrant and then withdrawing if we need to, because it gives us more time to have those conversations continue.
We continue to actively work on that one. And Katie, if we need a second one related to quiet zone, similarly, we're hoping we're going to sort that out before the 9th, right?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to call for and open the warrant for the, for the October 20th, 2025 special town meeting.
Second.
Could I just ask, the Town Manager, did you have a chance to look at the bull and arrow thing?
I did. Thank you for reminding me. So, um, when the Attorney General gave us feedback on that, it was a freeze that the Attorney General asked us to delete because it was in conflict with state law. It went beyond our authority, I believe, around it, um, being able to tell somebody. They couldn't couldn't shoot a bow and arrow on private property, is my recollection. So I am just conferring with the town clerk, because the guidance from the town council was that we did not need to go back to town meeting and that we could just, in the integrated general bylaw, the next revision, just take that, that out, just delete those words. But that conversation happened all within, right when the town clerk was transitioning. So I'm just checking with our current town clerk to make sure that that's, that she even knew about that. So, yes, thank you for raising that, yeah.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Great. Moving on to recycling and transfer station hours.
Great. Thank you. So this item is around looking at the hours for recycling and transfer station, but the memo, I think summarizes it well, so why don't I just walk through that? Just by way of history, in 2019, the town did a pilot program, basically, around summer hours, and under that, employees at a number of different town buildings and facilities, including the RTS, kept the same number of work hours, but changed the schedule, so working longer days, four days a week, and having a shorter day on Friday. In 2024, the town manager had come to the board and asked about making that the schedule year-round for the core hours for town hall, the Public Services Administration Building and Rosemary Complex, and that was agreed to at that time. And there was an interest from our public work staff last year to have a similar discussion around their work hours, and because of the unique nature of the recycling and transfer station, we said to pause at that time and we would continue the conversations, both with the board and with our employees. So as those conversations continued, I'm here today because we did kind of come to agreement with our public work staff about a modified proposal on the hours. So the memo really focuses on the RTS public hours, but just for clarity, kind of in the agreement with our DPW staff who do not work at the RTS, they will work their summer modified scheduled hours year-round, but these are folks in Parks and Forestry, Highway, Water Sewer, Fleet, so their kind of work schedules have less impact in terms of being, changing public access for hours to facilities. So the second part of it, the RTS hours, last year, we had been discussing, basically, taking the summer schedule and would be, we be willing to have that applied year-round. And that would have been a pretty significant reduction in the number of hours open to the public. So what's before you today is a modified proposal, where year-round, the hours would be seven to four, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday, and then seven to noon on Fridays. To give a sense, this is, in a, in every week, the public would have access 41 hours per week, so our staff work 40 hours. This is a bit expanded beyond that. And because we are maintaining the half-day Friday, there's few hours under this proposal as compared to the current non-summer schedule, but we're adding time back every single morning, adding a half hour. And so this proposal actually provides more public access than our current summer schedule. So when you merge those two together, the total reduction in the time that the RTS is open is 22 hours per year compared to current, which averages 25 minutes a day. So I will say, we don't take lightly that people really love the RTS and they want to access it as often as possible, and that is real, and actually, we take a lot of pride in that. But the goal here is balancing a few things. This really is staff recruitment and retention. We don't have an RTS without our staff, and, you know, they work a Tuesday to Saturday shift. That is, can be very challenging to make sure we're having staff who want to stay with us, stay on that schedule, and so having that half-day Friday is really meaningful for them. And, you know, I mentioned that the facility's open an hour longer than a standard work week of 40 hours. We end up staggering our staff to make sure that we are covering the hours that it's open, but getting closer to aligning 40 hours a week of being open with 40 hours of work time lets us both have more staff there when the facility's open, so there's more coverage, and lets us have more staff there to be able to do work when the facility is closed. So there's definitely trade-offs, and I guess the one other thing that I'm anticipating that I would be asked about is the RTS study. We did a big survey. It had a ton of responses from the town. I don't want anyone to think that this decision is in lieu of the conclusion of that study that is still ongoing. So Tetra Tech is our consultant on the RTS study. They are going to be coming back to us, I anticipate, before the end of this calendar year, with an analysis of the survey and recommendations, what did we learn from that, and what might some operational models be for the town to consider? And in our discussions about these hours, the question really was, are potential changes from that study so imminent that we should hold off on this? And my conclusion was that I'm comfortable with this proposal and bringing it to you, because even if that presentation from Tetra Tech is in the next few months, the ultimate decision about where we might go with the RTS and then actually implementing any changes has a much longer time horizon, and so it didn't seem like there was anything imminent to have to kind of make this trade-off. So that's the basis for the proposal. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair.
Katie, and I'm presuming that we will still look at the Sundays in the fall for leaves? So we didn't address that, but that, not changing that.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. We did have a question from somebody that came in today, you know, asking and referencing the Wellesley hours. I do want to note that the Wellesley Sunday hours are just April to November, so it's just six months a year, and another part of what they trade off is they do have three days a week that they're only open until noon. So everybody makes trade-offs in some place or the other. I think that this trade-off is a reasonable trade-off that's worth trying, and I, I think it's beneficial for the employees to feel valued as other employees do, while still recognizing the importance, at least certainly of the Saturdays, for people to be available.
So I'm not in favor of this proposal. We have partial results from the, the survey, and so 53% of people who responded said that the current hours of operation are not an issue, meaning that they like the current hours. And then just in terms of when people report that they use it most, obviously, Saturday is the most, but Friday afternoons is the next highest, along with, you know, Friday 10 to 1. So we're, not all hours are equal. We're, we're trading highly-used hours on Friday afternoon with very little-used hours on the 7:00 AM to 7:30.
Well, untested.
Excuse me?
Untested hours.
Well, it's not untested, because from, well, you're saying that right now, we see that 7:30 to 10:00 AM, the hours are very, the usage is very low at that time.
Yeah.
And so adding, I just want to, yeah.
Yeah.
So, and so just adding a half hour before that, it's feasible, that, that the usage could be higher at 7 than at 7:30, but I don't think that's likely. I think the draw, the, the benefit of retention, excuse me, retention and improvement, my understanding is that this was, the RTS is fully staffed right now, is that still true?
Yes, but it's a point in time consideration. So I guess, you know, we think about recruitment and retention as a constantly dynamic thing that we try to stay ahead of.
So I guess the way I think about it is that it's a, you know, a known cost in terms of, you know, we're trading, it's a loss in useful hours in Friday afternoon for, for theoretical benefit at this time. And I, I don't think we have to do it right now, because we're not in the midst of contract negotiations, nothing that may, that requires us doing right now.
We're also adding time, which we don't have data on, but we would have more of an understanding of usage from 7 to 7:30, so there's, you know, a change to the consumer on the front end of, you know, do they use that time?
Yeah, but at least at 7:30, they're not using it a ton, between 7:30 and 10.
As someone who's done the drive of shame, meaning I have a Toyota, it was full of trash, and I go there on a Friday afternoon and forgot they were summer hours, and I had to drive home and unpack, and, and so anyways, I share, I feel the pain, but I think especially as it goes into winter hours, if it's understood it's closing at 12, then that's sort of baked in the cake. That's out of, I shake my brain around that, and that works for me. So I sort of, I'm okay with the trade-off of closing at 12 on Friday. It is a trade-off we have to, we should make. As for the 7:00 AM start, my understanding is when they open at 7:30, there is a lot of people there, so they're either starting to spill, you know, in the driveway or whatnot. So perhaps people will like the 7:00 AM, but I think as long as it's advertised consistent and understood, this should work.
I, I think one of the things to consider is that, right now, in the summer, there's no Friday afternoon. It seems to me the summer is a time when people are more likely to go away on the weekends, et cetera, and so actually, the pain of no Friday afternoon access might be worse in the summer than it is in the rest of the year typically, so that maybe this isn't so bad and that the 7:00 AM for people who might quickly drop off on their way to work, you know, that that maybe enables them to do it before going to work. So there might be that benefit there.
Yeah, I guess, I feel like it's, consistency is actually the most important ingredient in this mix, that whatever hours we choose, I, I agree, it's difficult to lose Friday afternoon hours, but I think it's harder to lose staff. So I think as long as we can be consistent and we can, you know, open a little earlier, so maybe take some of the heat off of the early morning hours, not only the traffic that we know accumulates, but also allowing, 7:30 wouldn't be early enough for me to go to the dump before work. So if, if the, if the RTS is open earlier, I might consider that as an alternative. I recognize that this may be inconvenient for residents, but I think we have an obligation to our staff as well, to, to build in some lifestyle benefits for people who are consistently working Saturdays. And we're frankly doing a tremendous service for the town on the regular with very little fanfare. So I'm, I'm happy to try this change. We know that there is more change coming. I mean, that's sort of the only constant, and so if it's not working, that's, there seems like there's a perfect opportunity to bake in something else, to try something else.
Anything else from anyone?
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to set the following public hours for the recycling and transfer station on a year-round basis, beginning September 1st, 2025, as noted in the agenda.
Second.
Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Anything else from the town manager?
Just one update, that I've had inquiries about the deputy town manager search, and I promise it is robustly underway. There is nobody that wants to fill this position sooner than I do. But to say that at your next meeting, September 9th, I will be ready to have a final candidate to recommend for approval of appointment into that position. So I would say it would be sooner, but the cadence of your meeting schedule in the summer is such that your next one is September 9th. So look for that on the agenda.
Thank you. Katie, can I ask you to talk a little bit about the, the result from the MWR action?
I'm sorry?
The water restrictions?
Thank you. Yes, the, I will keep this general, because we are still talking with council about follow-up, but the town was in litigation around the Water Management Act, and this is because we have registered water and not permitted water, which is two distinctions under Massachusetts DEP regulations. We were in litigation about if water restrictions would be placed on the town for our registered water. And so we had appealed, and the appeal decision came out that those DEP restrictions would apply to Needham and to other communities similarly situated, and so we are in discussions about if there are any next steps on that.
Thank you. And was there any drought determination made this month as they, during their monthly drought? Here, Karen's just left.
I believe the map was just the cape.
There was a water restrictions notification sent out just.
It wasn't a restriction, it just asked people to please be careful.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I guess we can reiterate that it's worthwhile for people to be mindful, because it has been dry for a long time at this point, but I didn't know if there had been, I know that monthly meeting happened somewhere, like in the first week of the month, if something had changed.
I think it's always important to remember, in the summer months, two-thirds of the town's water usage is for outdoor watering, and our usage overall, our consumption of water in the summer is much greater than the rest of the year in terms of just basic daily living. So if you can hand water, that is helpful. If you can water, I think it's before.
Before 9:00 AM.
Before 9:00 and after 5:00. To help with evaporation, all of those things help to preserve a resource that is not unlimited.
Great. Okay, so we're going to move on to a board discussion of the select board goal setting for fiscal year '26, '27. Town manager, will you recommend that the board, you know, recommend?
Do you want to walk through the materials? There's a lot here.
Do we want to talk about those four items first, maybe?
Oh, yeah, that's a great idea.
It feels to me like we start with those four items and then we go back.
That's a great idea. So the four items that Marian is referring to are the policies that we discussed at our goal-setting meeting that we would review and discuss, and we were going to do that at this meeting, and those policies.
To determine if they should be included.
Yeah. And those policies were included in our packet, so we can get started. Josh, it looks like you want to get started.
So I think the first was the noise bylaw?
I think it's 40B.
40B. Well, it's in our packet that comes first.
Sorry, I don't have the packet. 40B, so we have 40B guidelines, unbeknownst to any of us, it seems, but we learned about them recently, basically at our goals meeting, and the process that we followed for the past two 40B applications over the prior year was not consistent with that policy. So I think it might be helpful to look it over and decide if we want to change our policy, or if we want to just understand the policy to make sure that we follow it in the future.
So Josh, help me understand how we were not consistent, because I had your comment in mind, and I was looking at the regulation, and I'm on page 119 of the packet, or page nine of the 40B regulation, which seems to me the only part. It's, it's under eligibility to apply for a comprehensive permit, and it says, "Once an applicant submits a project eligibility application to mass, mass housing, the Board of Selectmen, Select Board, will be notified. Mass housing will request local comments within 30 days. In Needham, the Board of Selectmen seeks comments from town departments and other town boards and compiles all comments received into a single submission to mass housing, depending on blah, 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 may convene a meeting with representatives of other town departments." So I thought we complied with that, but tell me where you're finding the discrepancy between our actions and the...
So as I read it, the guidelines say that prior to coming to the Select Board, a comment should be received from the design review board and from any other applicable boards.
I read this, if you're, are you talking about the pre-application? I read this, if you're, are you talking about the pre-application phase?
I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. Before it gets to the select board.
There's guidance here, as I interpreted it, there was guidance to the applicant that it would be smart and they would be wise to meet with the different stakeholding boards in the town. So they, they're advised to meet with the director of planning. They are advised to meet with the development review team, the design review board, the conservation commission, et cetera, et cetera. But I did not.
Before filing with mass housing.
But I did not view that as part of our process. The only part that I saw as part of our process is the select board has 30 days to come up with comments and that we should solicit comments from others and then send them to, you know, whatever we call it now, EOHLC. And I thought we had followed it, but I, you know, I just, we could have a discussion about that. But that was my interpretation because I was looking for the way we didn't follow it.
I, yeah, I have to say that I definitely read this as a helpful hints to the applicant. Sort of good, like get in our good graces.
Right.
Hints to the applicant, but not necessarily hard and fast rules, with the exception of the submission of the letter.
Which is, which is state law, I believe.
That's state law. So we're, you know, unless that's changed. But it doesn't seem that state law has changed in that regard.
I think this whole document has the, has the vibe of a guidance document to the applicant versus select work policy, to be truthful.
Can I, can I comment? I actually do think we complied with absolutely what the spirit of this is. And we certainly would have been among the boards that anybody proposing a 40B has come to talk to before going anywhere else. Okay, that's always been true. And I think that should continue to be the case. I would observe that I think frankly, this whole document is very antiquated at this point, having gone through the housing policy discussion that we went through. And it is somewhat an anachronism. There are pieces of this that are useful and there are pieces of this that make no sense whatsoever. They talk about the town's goal to reach 10%. So as I read this, I'm like, oh yeah, I do remember this document from however many years ago and when it was developed, because it was another piece of the puzzle to get us along the way to the 10% and be sure we achieved it. And trying to lay out, as you say, the how to for somebody who was going to come forward with a plan like this. It may make sense for us to revisit this. I don't think that it's the most critical thing that we need to do because I think we're currently working on MBTA communities and hopefully we'll see proposals under that framework rather than necessarily this that could come this way. And I think in the spirit of it, we could still do that at some point. We should really look at this if it is to be a how to for somebody for how to bring a 40B project. Because there's a whole bunch of pieces of it that no longer fit within the policy goals that we currently have on our, in front of us.
You know, preference for rental developments, et cetera. Like it just seems not modern necessarily, not in line necessarily with our goals, but also not a deal breaker. You know, like it would be, be good regulation hygiene, but not essential.
And that it talked about, you know, 20% affordable projects and higher levels of affordability. That's not happening in this marketplace or in today's market, except under very different conditions than a 40B kind of a project. So, yeah, so it's stated.
Yeah, so Kathy, it was the pre-application phase that was focused most on. So it is worded as should, not as must, but it outlines the key steps. So meeting with the director of planning and community development, meeting with town's development review team, having a preliminary meeting with the design review board, having a preliminary meeting with the conservation commission, meeting with the Needham Historical Commission, meeting with the design review board. So I suppose strictly speaking, those were not required to have happened, but they didn't happen. And we were generally the first board that they met with.
I mean, I think I would go to the language and I think it's what Heidi was saying earlier. It says, "Many problems that occur during the permitting process can be reduced or avoided altogether if applicants take the time to consult with local officials." Et cetera, et cetera. So it is the advice, how do you as an applicant smooth the way towards an approval? I think is more what it is, but you know, yes, it is, it is dated, you know, for sure.
But I think the bigger picture is if, if there are all going to be other 40B projects, we are not the best first stop.
I actually don't agree with that.
Why?
Well, I think if an applicant is going to work on, at this point, a lit project, coming to the select board and finding out if, doing a smell test, not getting approval, understand? Just presenting the basics of the project and getting a sense of whether this could be something or it were not, I think it's going to save the applicant a lot of time. Those are, that's a lot of, that's a lot of meeting expectations. And I think it's a totally reasonable expectation, frankly, on the part of the applicant to come to the last step first, make sure that there's nothing terribly unpalatable about the project that they are presenting and then going through all of the other steps and accumulating all the information. You're not, I mean, that's, that's, I think it's unrealistic to expect an applicant to make the rounds before getting those kinds of deals.
I'm also going to observe that we've had some applicants over my tenure who have come to the select board first and discouraged by the select board, have chosen to go the rest of the route and have ended up not building projects. I mean, so it's not to say that somebody may be dissuaded even if told that there would not be support from the select board. But, but I actually agree with Heidi. I do think it's a good first step because I think if the select board's not on board, I hope that somebody would think for a moment about whether in fact that's a path that they really do want to go down.
In listening to, to design review after, you know, we've given approval, it, it sounds as though they look to the select board as having given their approval, there's less scrutiny that they now have to give.
I don't think they ever abandon their job. That would be my observation.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I think the design review board is, it's a pretty robust process.
Sorry, did I say design review?
Did I say, yeah, help me?
I did.
We both did.
Well, eventually it goes to the zoning board.
Thank you, zoning board of appeals, that's what I meant to say. I think it's a robust process. It's a different process than, you know, your normal permitting, but it's still a robust process and it still involves all of the key elements.
Including the public.
And I think that they're pretty independent minded folks. I'm not sure that they're going to give on any elements just because the select board has passed it along to them.
Sorry, I think you're, I'm not saying that the, the, the design review board is not doing their job. I'm saying that when the select board gives their blessing to something, it carries a lot of weight. And I want to make sure that we are giving our blessing to things that we are capable of reviewing. And a lot of these things are really technical and I don't know that that's really within our wheelhouse to do. I think that's, I interpret the guidelines to be there so that that level of review happens before it comes to the select board.
Actually, I'm pretty sure that when we indicate that we support a project like this, that we are expecting that the affiliated boards in Needham that are required are going to do their job, particularly the jobs that involve members of the public weighing in, which the public, I've not seen be shy about weighing in on 40B projects. So I don't, I don't have any expectation that somebody is giving it a light touch after we've indicated that we think this is a valuable, worthy project for the town.
So, I mean, one, one of the applications of the, are requested waivers to, what, design review board, for instance, that where the, where the bylaw requires going to the design review board, the waiver is granted so that they don't go to the design review board. So that's just kind of one example.
And we didn't grant, we aren't the grantor of such a waiver, right? An independent board in town makes that decision with the information that they're presented and with the framework of the other decisions that they've made in the past. Right?
So, so the, so maybe the bigger picture is that the 40B process does bypass and has the potential to bypass many aspects of the zoning bylaw when waivers are requested. So when you say there's opportunities for public input, there are generally less opportunities for public input with 40B.
No. That's not true.
Why? Well, I'm thinking if, in a, in a typical case where you have to go potentially to design review board or conservation commission, maybe planning board, those are each opportunities for public to weigh in. Whereas with 40B, people just go straight to the select board and then to the zoning board of appeals. That's it.
In fact, it could be helpful just to clarify some of the jurisdictional identities you've, you've named. Design review board is advisory, whether it's 40B or not. And it's just who are they advisory to? So if it's something under a special permit, under the planning board's authority, the design review board gives their feedback on the project to the planning board. Under the 40B, if it's a comprehensive permit, that advisory is to the ZBA. But there isn't public comment kind of engagement through the design review board. It's just the members of that board who give their professional feedback. In terms of conservation, that's a permitting function. In terms of, that's triggered wholly outside of the 40B legal framework. So are you in a wetlands, are you in a buffer? And so none of that changes whether you're in 40B or not. So, so that one wouldn't be different.
Okay.
Yeah. And I just, I am not positive where Needham was on the, under or over the 10% when this was created, but Ms. Cooley suggested that it was before. And just the core clarification that 40B and getting a comprehensive permit. So before Needham was over the 10% threshold, an applicant can go for comprehensive special permit. Now that we're over, you all basically get to decide. So I think that maybe is a historical shift of what was the situation then and what is now. And so then that check in with the select board maybe would not have been as meaningful when we were under the 10% because.
That's fair. And we didn't even have people always check with us because they could go forward when we were under the 10%.
Right.
My understanding is that other towns do have regulations about the process for 40B. And I guess as we're talking about this, this sounds like it's guidelines more than regulations.
We did look at the history of what the board vote was and the board voted to endorse them. So it may be a difference without a distinction, but just so you know that.
And to be fair, Josh, I don't know if you indicate that another town has regulations now around that. Lots of the things have changed. I can tell you when Needham did this, very few towns in our area were at the 10%. We were one of the earliest. Okay, so this was something that let us get to the 10% level in a way that we could manage. Okay, I don't think people had regulations back then because everybody was dealing with projects that were coming at them, that were fully able to come at them. And you had, all you could do was just sit at a public hearing at some point and argue with a developer and hope that you got to a slightly better position.
Right. Maybe I could just take a step back. I guess I wasn't comfortable with how quick and how little information we had during the 40Bs over the past two, past year, the two 40Bs over the past year. Maybe I'm sensing that I'm the only one that feels that way, but that's how I felt.
I think we're not the ZBA. So I guess when I think about it, I think what is the level of look that we need to ascertain? High level business question, you know, thinking of business and opportunity for members of the town. But there's a whole regulatory framework that needs to be dealt with and that's not ours. So, so I guess that's the question, right? Somebody, that needs to be done, but that's not the select board's decision per view.
What, what do you think, what is the select, so when we are making a decision, what are we deciding on then?
I think we're looking at, does whatever the project of that particular size, with that kind of ownership framework, does that fit within the goals of the select board and make sense to us as a project that would benefit the town where we would have citizens who would benefit from such a project? That's the question that I think we're trying to answer.
And then the technical vetting happens elsewhere.
What it looks like and all of those things have to get sorted out, I think.
Ultimately, what I'm hearing is that while most of us, I think, feel like this does the job, it clearly could be refined. The question is, one of resources, how much time and energy and staff time do we have to review this and can it get slotted in to a regular review? You know, schedule, whatever that is, to, to take another look at it, clean it up a little bit, certainly modernize it. I'm not sure that I would change any of the, the elements to which you've drawn attention personally, but certainly there, there are elements that could be cleaned up. And then we could, we could have a more in-depth discussion as well about whether our regulations, such as they are and the state mandated portions need to be more, more rigid or at least more rigidly outlined. So maybe we can leave that to the town manager.
I just started looking at the, at the guidelines. And I just process wise noticed that it was a number of individuals from a number of relevant boards and committees that were part of this. So if you did want this to be a goal, I think the question is, are we reconvening stakeholders?
This is, well, this is not in my zero to 18 month bucket.
Yeah, I agree with that.
That would be my view. I think it's something that we should keep track of because it's completely out of date. It's very out of date. Okay, but, but this wouldn't be on my priority list. I think there's other things that have significantly higher priority than this.
I agree with that. I would also agree. Bottom line is that it gets the job done. And while it could be cleaned up for sure, I think that the basic guideline is there and we do follow it. So that wouldn't make my zero to 18 either.
Can I just ask for clarification? So if we have someone interested in a friendly 40B tomorrow, I think I'm hearing that the board does want that initial kind of check in to do the, the initial smell test before that applicant goes to the various other boards.
Yeah, and I will just say, one thing that may not be as visible is that in a lot of cases, or at least cases that I've been a part of, which is not to say a lot, the applicant comes to, to the office of the town manager ahead of time to get a smell test, then circles back and then comes to the full board. So there, there is a lot of work that is taking place that is, that is frankly not public and shouldn't be.
The planning board has had problems with that where like when they've had meetings outside of public view.
It's not a meeting though, no.
It's a meeting.
Well, it's not subject to the open meeting law.
Yeah, so that's, that's why the planning board has gotten scrutiny because it had meetings outside of a public meeting. And so I don't think we should be doing things like that either.
Okay, well, I know that we have different understandings of the open meeting law, but I, what I'm saying to you is that it is, it is not a violation of the open meeting law as the meeting law stands. And so, so you may just not have had that first notice on the projects that, that came before us. And so it may have seemed very abrupt, but I think that there was work, work on the applicant's part, going to different committees and all the, all the things that are mentioned in this that, that then weren't apparent.
I guess I'm, I'm not concerned as much for myself as I am for the public who is also feeling the same way.
But the public still gets all of the same presentations. The same, they see the same thing that the full select board sees and they see the same thing that the design review board or, sorry.
Or the planning board.
Thank you.
Or ZBA.
Again, I can't, well, I don't know why I can't keep this in my head tonight, but you know, there is, there is the same amount of public scrutiny.
Yeah, that's probably a different discussion.
All right, so do we have consensus for the town manager that this is not a zero to 18 month? So, do we have consensus for the Town Manager that this is not a zero to 18 month?
Yeah. But now that we know we have this, I think it's a good thing to reference.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have to say I was aware of it, but I actually didn't, hadn't read it in quite some time, and it is a bit messy. Let's move on to noise, which is only like a sentence.
Yep.
Which is great.
I didn't read it.
So, Josh, you also brought this to us, which is to, to take a look at the noise regulation, which I'm gonna read because it's easy to do. "Excepts in an emergency, construction activity conducted pursuant to a building permit which causes noise that extends beyond the property line shall be limited to the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., unless authorized by rules or regulations adopted by the Select Board." And there's a penalty. And you had mentioned that you wanted to take a look at this, you wanna tell us why?
I think there are other reasons than just construction that people are concerned about noise. I mean, leaf blowers was one, a big one. I think if we wanna look at that, it's probably gonna be easier to put as part of a noise bylaw than to regulate devices and things like that. And then, there are other, I mean, there's, you know, parties, there are all the other ways of generating noise that are not, that, that should probably fall in there.
Yeah, I think this would be a good opportunity to compare our bylaw to other bylaws, to see if there are other ones that work well in other places. I agree that construction is very minimal. I mean, I guess enforcement will always be an issue, but this is the kind of thing that we would need to study to understand, but I, my sense is, we could do better on this.
Yeah. I was surprised it was pursuant to a building permit. It's like, that's pretty narrow.
Yeah.
I think there are cases where it's broader than that. I'm thinking landscapers, yeah, you know, anyone working. So, we should take a look at that.
So, so the question then is, where does this go? What committee needs to end before we would add another committee?
Thank you.
That's the question that I would ask.
Can I make a suggestion? Does it have to be a committee that does this? Could we ask town staff to, to make some suggestions upon, you know, just researching other bylaws?
Well...
That's what committee does, too.
I, I think the challenge is, town staff is already involved addressing the priorities that we've already put on the table, so I, I think if we were gonna look at adding this in our zero to 18 bucket, we need to still say it comes after something, right? Something needs to complete before we just add more on top. That's my opinion.
I, I, I mean, if you assume that it's members of the Select Board that are also on the committee, then yes, because I think we're, we're at max capacity.
And I'm pretty sure our staff are as well.
But, but that's why I, I don't, I see this as, there are a lot of examples of noise bylaws elsewhere. I don't know if this is a big lift to revise.
Oh, that's famous last words.
Wait, is the question, is this a big lift to revise?
Sorry.
It's easy to collect the noise.
Let me restate that.
Okay.
So, I, I think we have a lot of examples that we can bring together to form proposals, reasonable proposals. We're not reinventing the wheel. There's another aspect of, you know, making sure that, that the public is comfortable with it. That, that is a lift, that is something that we have to do. But in terms of just getting proposals in front of us, I think that is fairly easy to do.
So, you just said the key word, proposals in front of us, which means, A, we need staff to go gather the proposals, and then it's coming in front of us, right? So, that gets me back to my question of, what's going to finish before us is going to figure out how to take on another thing.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm happy to just look up other towns' bylaws and, and, you know, we can circulate them, so we can start there.
I, I don't think that helps, because it means you need to put time on an agenda for a discussion, you need to actually take the time to review them thoughtfully.
Yeah, no, we need the staff to, like, that's be, this, there's a process. We gotta do it through staff, make it a priority.
Can I make an, maybe an observation or a suggestion? And I appreciate, we have finite resources, staff and boards and volunteers and committees. You know, at first blush, I don't think that this would require a committee, and sometimes that is more work for staff also than doing the work product, so it's hard to compare, like, is one more work-intensive than the other? So, I guess what my observation is, is maybe generally how we're thinking about the priorities that you gave. So, there's one version of the spreadsheet that just says the zero to 18, that includes the priorities that you all responded to the survey on. Kind of one was, what's your top five, and the other was tier one, two, three. And, you know, we, we haven't really discussed this explicitly, but now that we have tier one, two, three, I guess my approach would be, as a work plan function, that when I'm trying to figure out staff resources available to apply to these, I'm going to tackle tier one first, and kind of with the understanding that I really, tier two and three will follow. And so, if this is a tier three, it's more likely, it's just gonna start further out in zero to 18 as other things fall off. So, it won't, I can't tell you like calendar exactly, but I guess if there's a comfort level there, giving it a tier, and then you all knowing, kind of, not to expect an update until we've chipped away at some of the tier ones. It's kind of how I'm thinking about this in my first year.
I'm comfortable with that. I don't know if this has to be number one priority, but I think it, it's something that the community has been asking for.
Yeah, and I think it, in my mind, it relates somewhat to what we're trying to do with the trains, you know what I mean? Like, people are aware of that as, as noise that is a nuisance or even more than a nuisance. So, yeah, I mean, I, I would like to look at it. I think that's fair. It's not like, we've got Pollard, we've got Stephen Palmer, we have these things that we must do. This is not at that level, but it's a quality of life thing, that, you know, it, it could improve quality of life significantly.
When we were looking at leaf blowers a couple of years ago, I think there were like, we were getting emails from resident groups sort of saying, how do I join, what group is doing this? And there were like several of them. So, I think there's actually a lot of interest in addressing this issue. I'm not sure, yeah, you're right, how we queue it up, but I think we, we need to do it.
Is it a two or a three?
Two.
I'm flexible.
I know. Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's not gonna, the, the big things are gonna come first, you know? Just Stephen Palmer, it's the Pollards, big things.
Yeah, I'd say tack it on at the end of the list.
But this, this could make a difference for people, I, I would like to look at it. Well, I do, I do think there is collective agreement here that a noise bylaw that's limited to construction is too narrow, right?
And we could look at the hours, yeah.
So, certainly.
I don't think the hours are necessary.
Yes, it'll be open.
Maybe.
I heard some complaints about it. That wasn't my first thought.
People will have many opinions about this. I just offered that observation.
Oh, yeah.
They will.
They are all experts.
As are we. Okay, so, we're gonna move on to looking at our appointments policy.
Did we come up with a two or a three? Where's Katie putting this?
I literally have a two-dash-three, which is fine. It's fine. I have heard your comments and your feedback and will work through this over the next 18 months.
Okay.
And if I need to come back to you, right, I will.
Yeah.
Perfect.
You know where we live. All right. And, and by the way, I'm up like so much earlier than 7:00 a.m., so this really no longer affects me, but, um, appointments.
I did not put this on the list.
Who put it on the list?
This originated, oh, gosh, I'm having...
I thought it came up from the appointment we did.
Yeah, it came up a couple of times. One of the questions was, is our current process for having the Vice Chair do all of the interviews and make the recommendations under the current process, one that we want to stick with, with, and the second one, I apologize, is completely escaping me.
I'm partial to our current process, but I wrote it, so.
Well, if nobody, if this is not resonating with anyone, then maybe that's our answer.
Yeah, I'm fine with our process.
I think it's fine.
I, I think that this came up in the context of the NHA appointment, and there was a distinction made between standard appointments and joint appointments, but...
Which is in the document.
I, I still feel that, not only that we followed our process, but that the process is fine. So, just before we leave, I mean, I think that was where this came from, if I, if I recall correctly. But if, if it's not resonating, then let's move on, 'cause...
Okay.
Yeah, I know, he's a believer of the point.
And we do enough appointments that we can raise any flags as they come along, so...
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the appointment process, especially lately, I'm gonna just give a shout-out to the Vice Chair, because we have had so many applicants, which is fantastic, but it really makes it quite a, quite a job. So, yay you, well done. Okay, so then, there was the, so I think we're fine with that one, then we don't need to do anything. The next one was an idea that you brought up at goal-setting about elected boards for public works and other functions.
Yeah, so, I had been, so, this goes back a while. The immediate impetus is really Envision, where there, there are, you know, structural changes to roads that, we have, we have oversight over DPW, but we are not experts in that field. When there are structural changes to roads, there, we do not have the time or expertise to really provide that oversight, generally. Even like tonight, when we, you know, we're looking at these plans, I, partly because I'm newer to the Board, like, I don't know what to look for necessarily. Maybe that's just me getting up to speed, but in general, because roadwork is such, very important to residents, I mean, whenever there's a roadwork project, whenever there are traffic impacts, that, that really raises, you know, people's attention. And so, it, it was an idea, other towns do this as well, such as Wellesley, where there's a board elected for oversight of DPW that is, that's their only function. So, they're experts, and they can devote the time to it, whereas we may not be able to. Not, not that, you know, it's prohibitive for us, but just the way we work, it's not something that we do on a regular basis.
I do need to note that they're not experts, but you are correct that they work in that one particular discipline on their elected board, but... I guess, I would say a couple of things. I think that, I think I share your concern, but I'm not sure about this as the solution. So, I think, I think the concern I share is that there are times, and I think Envision's a good example, even some of these things on Highland and Great Plain, where there's different kinds of road projects. There's road projects that are routine, that are maintenance, that can kind of go on autopilot, that can just be scheduled and, because they're just maintenance. And then there's others that really remake the town, or really change the experience for residents in some way. And I think those are, should be handled differently. So, I'll just say that. I think this, though, and, and I'll, I'll point at Wellesley, just because I, I know, you know, I, I had a very informative coffee with a woman on the Wellesley Select Board, and they don't have a true Town Manager, and obviously, Mary Ann, you can speak to this, but they don't have a true Town Manager. Their Select Board, like, directly handles, you know, all the different aspects of running the town. It's a full-time job. They, they do it completely differently. So, we have a Town Manager who oversees a very professional operation, this would kind of take a piece of that off, and so, the Town Manager could no longer hire and manage the DPW, and then it's kind of like the Planning Board. I guess I just worry that, like, especially if we take these kinds of things that, that you and I are both concerned about, if the concern is with something like Envision or Great Plain or whatever, that it's changing how people live their lives, then I'm not sure that a separate board that's only looking at kind of roadwork and that kind of thing would actually be the right bunch of people to understand that. I think it actually is better when it comes back to us. Now, then we might, we might just say, hey, you need to hold off on that, or we need to get more public input, or whatever we need to do, because this is not just a road project, this is a remaking the town project. But I think if you push it up to this other board, you're even more likely to get something that doesn't mesh with everything else we're trying to do, you know what I'm saying? So, that's why I'm, my worry. Like, I, I totally share the concern, I'm not sure about this as the solution.
I'm not worried to this as a solution? This is just what I thought of.
Yeah.
I, I think we do need to tackle the problem, though, because if we, if we don't get a handle on traffic and congestion, it will limit our ability to grow as a town.
I, I would just offer, too, that I'm not at all certain that an elected board would actually bring expertise, because it's an elected board, and so, you kind of get what you get, they all have to be residents. I mean, Needham is incredibly lucky to have, like, a breadth of expertise across subjects that is frankly remarkable and super unusual. I mean, probably we'd get some good candidates, but you just never know. It's kind of the luck of the draw. And I also, I don't love having that element of the DPW being directly subjected to the political winds. I think that the DPW is the technical expert, and that it is our job to take the advice, not necessarily agree with it, and certainly in projects like Envision, where you, you know, technical expertise is one thing, but remaking the town is another thing, I totally acknowledge that. But I think that, that DPW is our technical expert, and so, as long as we're asking the correct questions, how is this gonna work, how is this gonna affect people, that we don't need to get down on the road level and have all the technical expertise, that's their job, and their job is to provide recommendations to us. So, I, I guess, while I see the issue that you've brought up, I, I'm not sure that I think that this is the solution, but...
Can, can we rephrase it as a goal, then, to tackle, I mean...
Well, I think, in the, in the case of Envision, you know, I think part of the issue is that we started that project as a DPW project. It was a long-running DPW project that was carried forward, and, and even though many of the people in town weren't aware of it, that was a project that had been ongoing for 20 years, and it was carried forward as part of that project. And the way that Envision has been reoriented to, instead of coming from DPW, come from the Select Board, and, and the committee that reports to the Select Board, actually does make that change that you're referring to, and takes back a lot of the control and direction of that project, and uses the DPW for technical expertise, but not for project direction. So, I, I think that, in my mind, I mean, it's not done yet, we'll see how the rest of it goes, obviously, and there's a lot to still accomplish, but in my mind, we saw that issue and have begun the correction that is required to, to make it successful and accountable. So, I'm, I'm not sure that, I, I think that there's a systemic problem that needs solving. I think there was, there is an Envision problem.
So, I, I think it's systemic, I think it's broader than just Envision, because, I mean, the Muzzy was, the first Muzzy rezoning basically died because of a traffic study that wasn't done. Like, people were concerned about traffic. I think there are concerns about traffic in general, about any project that's done now, and how, how do we, how do we get in front of that? How do we address people's concerns so that people aren't afraid of any project that goes up?
Well, that, that's not a, a realistic expectation, to, to not make people afraid of any project ever. I, I mean, I don't think, traffic is always gonna be a concern. I, I don't think that you can get ahead of that, you can do the, the work, but I'm not sure that I agree even on the reasons that Muzzy failed.
But that doesn't mean that it should be dismissed as a concern.
I'm not dismissing it, I just don't think that, that it's a reasonable expectation to eliminate it. Mary Ann?
I was just gonna say, the issues around Muzzy and traffic, the traffic studies were done around Muzzy, so that's not the issue. People didn't like...
People didn't like the traffic studies. People argued that it was a pandemic. There were all kinds of things that went on. But, but, but it was not that there was not a study done. Okay, so I think it's important to understand, there were studies that were done, they were based on traffic counts, we had a lot of information, people wanted to hypothesize it in a different way, right? And there were people who believed that with a variety of uses on Muzzy, that they would not be able to get out of their neighborhoods anymore. But that was not based on the traffic counts. That was based on what they believed. Okay, so I, we're going to have that discussion with any large-scale project we have. And the example that I come back to all the time is what happened when Modera went in, which I remember people being very concerned about traffic. And as I say all the time, in however many years, I've seen exactly two cars now going in or coming out of Modera. So that's not going to happen at every development either, right? But, but people were thinking, again, they would never have, have people able to cross the street, you know, you would never get past that, cars would never get in or out of that driveway. That happens with every project, is kind of my view, and it's always something that we need to look at and understand and work with the experts to understand. Now, if we go back to transportation and systemic, right? I do think there are some systemic things we need to understand about what's going on on Needham streets. And I also think that that was part of the point of creating this Mobility Coordination Committee, and asking them to take a look and set some standards for sidewalks, for complete streets, for understanding, you know, how are we going to think about parking, all those different things. So I think they need some time to do their work. I guess that's what I think, rather than layering another group on top of that group.
Yeah, so, so I just go back to the concern, I guess, rather than this particular proposed solution. The concern is that people's commutes are getting longer. It takes a very long time to just get across town in Needham. And our infrastructure has a limited capacity. How do we, you know, when we redesign roads for safety, and when we build buildings and do projects, how do we accommodate traffic and people's concerns about traffic? I mean, I, you know, right now, the example you gave about Modera, I mean, it feels like, you know, people have concerns, and then the solution is just to wait and see. And, is that what you're saying, or is something different?
No, I don't think it's to wait and see. What happened at Modera actually matched what they told us would happen, not what people thought would happen, is the example that I would give. It matched what the traffic engineers said was going to occur there, but it is not at all what members of the public thought would occur there. I would have said that the same thing was going on at Muzzy, right? If you understood what traffic was already going at Muzzy, from Muzzy itself, from their parts business, there was actually less incremental traffic than you would have thought that was going to be coming at Muzzy. But members of the public thought that there would be a huge, huge difference from one to the other. And, you know.
But then, I feel like there's a disconnect. We're not communicating well enough, or we're not
Well, we did have a traffic engineer who did an awful job at town meeting with the first round at Muzzy, to be honest. It did happen, and that was a real problem that year, yeah. So you're correct, communication can definitely do a job on you.
Yeah, and, well, I feel like we're spinning a little bit right now, but
I mean, I think, I think the awareness of this is something that we can, we as elected people who are responsive to the community need to keep in mind in our decision-making, and, and when we question things, that we keep it in mind, and we question hard on those things, and we make sure that we think the traffic study was good, you know what I mean? And if, can they answer our hard questions, you know, and that we are skeptical, and that we say, well, yeah, that sounds great, but what about this? And, you know, are you going to cause another problem? You know, and I think that's part of our job. But I think those are real concerns, and that we have the role to ask the hard questions and be skeptical.
Well, and, and I think, right, are there times when it takes longer to get across town? I'm not sure that it's longer than it used to be. I mean, when it's the time that school is letting out, there's like a magic 20 minutes in the afternoon that feel awful, but it's 20 minutes, right? And then you kind of go back to a steady state.
I, I mean, I have a different experience, and I know many residents have a different experience.
I'm going to bring us back to the, it's clear that there's an issue that we want to discuss and perhaps discuss further, but as far as the policies that we set out to review, I think it sounds like we have agreement that maybe this one isn't the solution that we need. You said that you weren't married to this, and is this something that you'd like to propose, or just you wanted to discuss?
Well, I want to discuss it. This, this, I do think it may have benefits, but this is not something that I'm going to
Okay. Yeah, I'm just wondering if you want us to, like, take a look at this, you know, how you feel about tiering this, this particular
No, I'm happy to not do that, but I do hope that we will find other ways to address
Oversight.
Yeah, to provide oversight in a way that maybe we haven't as much in the past, with the recent exception of Envision.
Okay. And Josh, I'm presuming you mean oversight or understanding, right? Because if, in fact, that a significant part of the reason why people believe and perceive that it's taking longer to get from one side of the town to the other, is that there continues to be increased traffic coming from farther west and south, that drives through the town of Needham on their way to going to Boston and other destinations, right, to and from, that's not something that we're probably going to stop until that person from outside the town decides that it's going to be faster for them to go another way, right? I mean, so I guess I want to be clear, we don't actually control all the variables.
Not all of them, no. But when we decide to, you know, rebuild a building in a certain location, that is, there are traffic considerations that go along with that, that we need to really keep top of mind, I think.
All right, let's, let's talk about our goals. I'm going to bring us back to whether or not we are ready to adopt our vision, goals, and initiatives as tiered by us and
Madam Chair, could I make one request?
Yes.
I'm sorry. In your packet, there was one goal at the retreat that I had recommended operationalize, and I just, on reflection, wanted to ask if you would be willing to revisit it. So it was continue staff recruitment and retention, including staff levels and classification compensation system. I suggested operationalize, because of course, we're always doing this. But two things dawned on me. One, we have funds to do a competent class, which is something we do only every five years, and it'll impact our collective bargaining and all of that, and it's a big project. So I think it's worthy of reflection. And I also don't want anyone reading these documents to think that because they don't see it, we're not doing it. So sometimes there's value in just naming that staff retention and recruitment is an ongoing goal. So if you're open to it, I would ask that you add that into zero to 18, because we are doing it anyways.
Sure.
Sure. Makes sense.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right. Is there any other part of this, goals and initiatives, tiering, timing, et cetera, that we want to discuss before we move along?
I would make a motion.
Please do.
That the Select Board vote to adopt its vision, goals, and initiatives for FY 2026 through 2027.
As amended by our action tonight.
Yes, as amended by our action tonight.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes. Let's talk about Pollard. So the attached, in our, in our revised packet, there was a Pollard Middle School project draft of options. This is a matrix that outlined the draft facilities and educational goals for the Pollard Middle School Building Committee to use as a tool to compare project options. The presentation is in our packet, but we don't have anyone in front of us tonight. So I think primarily it was the matrix that we wanted to discuss and all of the things that went into it. So Josh, I know you had some things that you wanted to bring up. Do you want to start?
Sure. So this is in the context of, like, the reason why I think we should be doing this is because we are going to be responsible for writing the language, or the language to put on it.
Yeah.
So we need to be comfortable that, you know, the decision is, we can defend it, we can explain it, things like that. So, going to the matrix of goals, some things that I noticed, this, this comment pertains to goals one, A through D, and also to six and seven. It seems to suggest that there are advantages to operational costs and to environmental, like, stretch energy code in the town climate action plan by building six through eight school compared to a seven through eight school. And I think that's because High Rock would be used as, you know, a continuing sixth-grade center. But my understanding is that High Rock is going to be used in any scenario, either as a sixth-grade center, or a swing space, or as a sixth elementary school. So I don't think we can penalize the seventh and eighth grade scenarios for that reason.
This is, sorry, which, I, how are these, which ones are seven and eight through, I thought these were just different locations.
These are different locations and different scenarios, so
But are they, I thought they were all six through
The ones that you're looking at that aren't, that are penalized are the base repair and the renovation versus the new construction.
No, so I'm, so the ones that are, like, eight, eighty?
Eight, eighty.
Ah, okay.
So columns, yeah.
Okay. Eight, eighty consistently versus thirteen, thirty-five is, looks worse.
Right.
Okay.
So, but we're penalizing those in terms of energy efficiency because they are not new buildings.
Well, no, you have a new, a new seven and eight school, but
Well, would it not be the case that a larger building that's all new, that all of that would be
I think, the way I'm reading it, let me just speak for myself, this is a base repair. So you're using the existing building and repairing it. This is an add renovation. So you're, this is the eight, eighty that you're talking about versus the thirteen, thirty, but it's, it's a renovation of the existing building. These new construction pieces are the ones that get the, the good numbers on energy efficiency, but that's because they're new construction.
So in the new construction
I agree with Josh. Josh is correct here.
So in the new construction, either at Pollard or at Defazio, I'm comparing the eight, eighties to the thirteen, thirty-fives.
Mm-hmm.
They're both new construction, just, one is a bigger building than the other. I, I think they should be, get the same rating, because High Rock, the only difference is High Rock is going to be used as a sixth-grade school or used as something else, but it's still going to be used.
So does this combine the High Rock rating with
It does. That asterisk says, assumes High Rock, High Rock lowers the overall score.
Okay, you see that?
Okay. So where that's an impact, that is a true
Yeah. I would just make an overall comment, too, having been a consultant, where we use these kinds of stoplight charts, you got to be really careful with these, because people will look right at the greens. So if you are not certain of what you're doing, I mean, some of the other things that may, me thinking on this chart are some of the extraneous costs. So I don't know if in here, and this is just a comment, for example, disruption of town use of fields is one thing, but if it also disrupts the DPW and it changes what we have to do with the DPW, that could be a huge other cost. That's not on here.
It should be on there.
It should be on there, it's not on there. There's also, none of these things are weighted.
Yep.
They're just added up problem. It, it just is too easy to say, oh, look at all those greens, that's the obvious one. But I think you have to be really, really careful. We just talked about stormwater, that's not on there. Now, that has to be baked into the cost. The cost is not here. How do you, you know, I think that generally speaking, given the enormous cost of this, we're going to be privileging the lowest-cost option unless there is a very compelling argument to spend more. None of that's there. So I get, it's, it's, I understand why this is being used, but I think we just, we have to be very, very careful with this, because it conveys a very strong message that it's, it's maybe very misleading.
Yeah. So I did not create this chart?
No, I know you didn't. I'm just saying, and I don't know who didn't, it's not a criticism, but I'm just saying, we got to be careful with this stuff, because it leads everybody towards the solution. It may be missing a lot of things in the analysis, and it may not be weighting things.
Yeah.
So this is done by the school team. I mean, this is their, they create this, looking at their educational goals.
The consultant.
Yeah, working at the school. So it's educational goals fulfilling educational goals.
Well, but there's all these other things. Facilities, sustainability, all that stuff.
But you brought the good point about stormwater. So, yeah, they didn't look at that, but we should look at that beyond this.
Yeah.
I mean, we should add to.
I was just saying, as a communication tool, if it's, if it is, if we are going to be going and trying to persuade the public, it's just, this is a communication thing that will stick in people's minds.
Well, maybe just to clarify, I, my understanding is that this matrix is intended to be used to narrow down to one option. Is that correct?
To help inform the school building committee that ultimately will decide. So the matrix is not making the decision, but it will inform the committee that is.
And I, I do think it's really just telling people something about this particular list of aspects.
It's hard, though, people focus and they don't, whatever's missing, so that's the question, if there are some things that are missing.
You know what I mean? If they're not going to know, it's not going to be part of the decision. It could lead us to come to an option that's like, actually not optimal.
At your point about weighting, there's no explicit weighting, but there is implicit weighting, because I noticed that some of these things are very overlapping.
Yeah.
Basically counting things twice.
Yeah.
So in particular, like the, you know, specialized energy code and climate action plan, those are really very similar. And then there are many options, town master plan, middle school reunification, those really are the same thing in this case. That's how I interpret it.
And is it the school committee that will decide on the optimal? Who decides?
It's the school building committee, which is the PPBC with representatives from the schools. So it's one member of the school committee, the principal of the Pollard.
Well, and with the MSBA, the MSBA
Yes, certainly.
Is not completely divorced from this.
Right. So the school committee votes the education, has voted the educational goals, and the school building committee, which is PPBC with school members, vote the submission to the MSBA.
Yeah. I guess, I, I hope that in the process of this, that some of these extraneous costs, you know, such as impact on DPW, stormwater, et cetera, somehow are baked into the decision.
Also fields, so
Yeah, all of that stuff, because it, you know.
You know, I would also, Pollard added, and they were getting over our skis, but there were maps in here, and I also thought that an issue of safety, I think it's a huge bottleneck that's on Dedham Ave, and the only way for, for, an easy way through, and the only way through is through the tunnel underneath the MBTA tracks. And looking at all the neighborhood, the neighboring streets, how many kids will jump the tracks to get over to the school field? Because it's sort of a trap site on Defazio. And like, that's a huge consideration.
Yeah, I think also parking is an issue here. It seems like they've added back parking, but now you're parking for twice as many, I mean, you're parking for all the fields and for the school. But the parking has not, like, increased.
So I would have added safety.
Yeah. So, in, are we just having this discussion, or did you want to
This is feedback that I'm hoping This is feedback that I'm hoping will be integrated into a revised matrix.
Yeah, so we can pass this along. And just to give context to where they are in the process, the next community meeting is August 21st at 6:30 and that's Zoom only, but that's the next point where everyone can weigh in on the process. And then the next permanent public building committee meeting is on August 25th and we are anticipating at that time a refined matrix, but also cost estimates, very high level. But the first kind of flush at cost estimates for each option.
Would the cost estimates just be, what is the cost to construct? Or would the cost estimates include downstream costs? Like what we've talked about of stormwater or DPW being moved or extra parking or any of these other things that we would end up having to pay for that would be cost to the town?
I know that the request has been made from another friends to have those downstream costs, but I don't know what's coming on the 25th, so I just don't want to answer the question for sure, but I can ask.
Okay. I think the point's been made though, it's a valid one. So we want to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples. Okay. In that case, let us go on to committee reports. Who's thought a committee report? Mary Ann?
Boy, you're going to ask me to remember what happened at the large house committee last week. Hang on, do I still have my packet up for that?
I have some hints if you want.
Yeah.
We had a discussion of an RFP going out for modeling of the various changes that were.
Right, so we're looking to understand economic impact on citizens in town. But that was actually a relatively, I think of that as a relatively small part of the discussion. The RFP was already out and in fact, I think the responses should have been already due back and
Right.
we'll hear about it next week.
But some of the modeling that was going to take place was based on the FAR changes that the committee is contemplating and also the height changes. And they're doing a lot of work to model the changes that would happen to, what, what the changes would look like on a house based on the sort of degree of change.
What they might look like.
What they might look like.
With, with the constraints of what our imagination considered. And, and I only say that because last time we thought we knew what they might look like too. And the answer is, people had different ideas that had not even been considered possibilities. And that is, I think, one of the real challenges with this work is that the world moves on and things change and somebody does something new and people jump on board and people are like, oh, that, I don't like that, it's different. Right, and you end up in a different place. There is a very helpful model that was created that lets you see by clicking quickly, like how the mass of a house can change from the current massing to something smaller by changing FAR and by changing lot coverage. That is actually pretty interesting. And of course, you will recall that from the public hearing that we had with builders, we do expect that these changes, which are something, you see that when you click through, but are not huge, right? But there's something to try to give more space and to bring the mass down a little. It gives you a sense of how that works and we wouldn't expect it necessarily to change either the price that somebody would be willing to pay for land or the price that they would be selling this now smaller house for. Because there is a market to buy a house in Needham and it's pretty expensive, but people continue to buy here. So people just need to understand that even if we downsize, that doesn't change affordability. That's not an expected outcome.
Josh, can you make any thoughts?
Stormwater, we got twice, I believe, maybe more.
We had a hearing.
We had a public hearing. We got really good feedback. There were about 17 people online and then another like seven in the room. And people are very detailed, like they're very focused on the details. And there were a lot of comments about DPW actually, like, you know, how infrastructure is implemented and how that impacts the stormwater, which is not part of the bylaw, but is something that, we have to address. And we're going to start the regulations. The regulations are really, you know, the how, you know, how things are implemented. And I know Tom Ryder, our town engineer, has a lot of expertise and thoughts about that. And we also have the draft from 2018 that we are relying on as well.
We're meeting tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Come join us.
T-chock met last night and we will have a full update in September. We do those quarterly and in between, these are just getting reimbursements out to Needham Housing Authority, but Reg Foster, the Chair of the Needham Housing Authority Board, did tell us that the state finally made its decisions on projects. They were very late, they made them last week, but Linden Chambers did not make that first round. That was expected. They hope to be, you know, upfront in the next round. I will have a more full update after the September meeting, which I think is the day before our next meeting. So I will, I will also just note, general bylaw committee has not been meeting over the summer, which is why I have not had updates. But we will start and, and I think the next meeting we have for that is actually end of September. So I will not have an update for a while.
Can I ask a question? So with the delay of Linden not being funded this cycle, does that impact Seabeds Cooks?
It should not, no, Seabeds Cook is the one that generally has to come first. So the fact, but they, and I'll be able to update you more, but they, they should be like going, but I can't give a detailed update tonight, but that should be actually really moving even while Linden Chambers is not breaking.
The Council of Economic Advisers met on Friday last week and had a fuller discussion of priorities, including the referral items from the Select Board, namely taking action on an exploration of an economic development plan for the town. Also, some of the parking issues that the town has been looking at and seeing what action the council could take to act on some of the recommendations from the STANTEC study, as well as some of the other referral items that were on the Select Board list, like changing the Kendrick Street sign and so on. So more to come there. The Tree Committee met last night. Our prior meeting, we had decided to move forward with a very focused bylaw, focusing on essentially the situation of clear cutting, mostly because of new construction. So we met with town council last night and talked about issues of execution and making sure that we understood what was involved in making those changes and then started looking at bylaw that we feel could be a model for Needham's, which was Wellsley's with some changes. So making lots of progress. Also, I just want to note that we had the Purple Heart Ceremony. Kevin, help me, when was that? Seven, thank you. Which commemorates those Needham residents who have, had earned the Purple Heart. And just want to say thank you to the Exchange Club and the VFW and the Needham Channel, and I'm sure I'm forgetting folks, but it was a really lovely evening, perfect weather as well. And then lastly, a number of us attended Needham Night, which is an event held by the Charles River Chamber to celebrate Needham businesses and the wonderful businesses that were honored there included Needham Garden Center, Cook Restaurant, Valente Farms and.
The Rotary.
And there was another award for a business that wasn't a business, a service agent, and that was the Needham Rotary. So congratulations to all of those winners. All right, so. I'm sorry, I thought you already spoke, I thought you were done. What's your other update?
Town Seal and Branding Committee must have met.
No. September 9th. I went to the Needham to the World unveiling.
Oh, yeah, right.
It was on Dr. Fisher, he was not there. But his great, 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 great grand nephew was there. And it was very interesting. If you ever read the David McCullough book about pioneers, he makes a point, pioneers, we think all went west. He said, there was a whole group that went east, they went to the, to Europe to learn and educate themselves and really ramp up, you know, in this case, medicine. Paris was the center and Dr. Fisher went there. With his brother was known as too. But anyways, it's really very interesting, it's great, it's very good. Envision Needham, you guys were meeting tomorrow night, but you got the memo, Katie, about updates on that. And that's it, that's all we got.
All right. So I'm going to suggest that we retire to executive session under the, under exception three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Needham Police Union and the Needham, and the Police Superior Officers Association. And also under exception six, to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property at Stephen Palmer Building at 83 Pickering Street in Needham, Massachusetts. Because the Chair declares that we must enter executive session. I'm never entirely sure how to read these.
That open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
Oh, I'm going to miss you so much. And I would suggest also that we will adjourn at the conclusion of the executive session without returning to open session.
Second.
Thank you. All right, any discussion? Anything else before we adjourn? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Sorry, Kevin?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Josh? Mary Ann?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Good night, everyone.